Good evening, everybody. This is the regular Planning Commission meeting. The date is March 4th, 2020. And the first thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The third item on the agenda is the approval of the Planning Commission agenda.
So moved to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The fourth thing on the agenda is a motion to approve of Planning Commission meeting minutes on February 19th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Item number five is a public hearing and discussion. 5223 Pine Street Northeast Lee Preserve and Preliminary Platte Review, pages 1 through 14, and Enclosures and A1. At this time, Jessica, would you read the notice as published in the Forest Lake Times on February 20?
Yeah. City of Columbus Public Hearing Notice Preliminary Platte. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, March 4th, 2020, at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a request for a preliminary plat, Lee Preserve, creating two new lots in the Rural Residential Zoning District. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Applicant is Xiangkang Li. Property location, 5223 Pine Street Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota. Signed Elizabeth Marsco, Zoning Administrator, published in the Forest Lake Times on February 20th, 2020.
Thank you, Jessica. At this time, I'd like the applicant, Xing Li, and his representative, if he has one, to step forward to the table up front and state your names and your addresses.
Hi, my name is Xingkang Li.
You can have a chair. You can sit down. Thank you.
My address is 5223 Pine Street, Columbus, 5014.
Thank you. And sir?
My name is Matt Davich, and my address is 6776 Lake Drive Northeast in Lino Lakes. I'm with Rudes Land Surveying, and we worked on the preliminary plat on this job.
Thank you. We'll start off right off the bat here, Xing. If you, I know we have all the paperwork up here, but if you can explain to us what your, give us a little background on what you plan to do on your property.
You know, basically, we bought the property over a year ago, and I just wanted to build a house right there and live here for a long time. And so, you know, I just wanted to split the lot and build a house right there. Basically, that's what I planned to do.
Okay.
No other option, plans.
Do they have to speak up a little louder, or is that fine?
Yeah, if you could speak up just a little bit louder.
Yeah, basically, I just wanted to create a new lot so I can build a house right there for my family. That's pretty much what I was planning to do.
Okay. And you're going to cut the property and take the buildings with part of the property?
Yes, the two outbuildings, that's what I was planning to do, to separate that from the original lot that was there, from the existing house. It's got two outbuildings, and I wanted to cut the property line, you know, between those two, the house and the two outbuildings with the new lot.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, or?
I see, just with the recommendation, Elizabeth or Dean, maybe you could address this word. It talks about recommendations of Anoka County Survey Department, and then also the Coon Creek. What is that about? Is there other things that need to happen in order for this, or?
In a standard subdivision, there's two ways you can subdivide property. One is a developer will come in and they'll go to the watershed district, do storm water management, and get the required permits prior to the development because they're going to create building pads. In this case, we checked with Coon Creek, and they are going to require the Coon Creek watershed permit when they get the building permit. So I think it is your understanding that you will apply, should you need a permit for storm water, with Coon Creek, with, along with the building permit. Is that your understanding also?
Yes.
Okay.
So that pertains, then, just when he puts up the new house? Is that, okay.
Yes.
That I was, I wasn't clear on.
As far as the Anoka County Survey Department, this is a plat, and when it goes for plat check, there'll be several things that they'll look at, and this plat will be subject to all requirements of Anoka County. Sometimes they change the name, sometimes they make corrections to it.
I might add, if this were on a county road, we would also make it subject to Anoka County transportation. So, as Elizabeth said, we don't want any surprises. We try to provide the applicant with as much insight. Just because we approve the plat doesn't mean they're done. There are a lot more things that they need to do.
One of the unique things on this particular property is that there is only going to be one driveway, and so we will ask the applicant to have an agreement drawn up, and they'll have to submit it to the city, because it's my understanding that it is, while driveways, there is a line that goes to the driveways, but there probably only be one driveway, so they'll have an agreement, probably for maintenance of that driveway. Unless you've made another arrangement.
How soon do I need to have that completed for that agreement?
You know, it's generally done, or a form of the agreement is generally in the developer's agreement, and yours, your developer's agreement will be very short, and there won't be a whole lot in there, but it will say something to the effect that this form will be signed at closing, because I don't know if you're going to sell the lot, or what you're going to do with that other lot, but upon sale of that lot, they'll have to sign that agreement.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was planning to do. Once everything goes through, then maybe sell the lot, and that's the only way I'll have enough credits to build a new house.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess I'll have to plan on doing that.
So what happens for the Planning Commission? So there'll be a very short developer's agreement. This isn't a very large development, and so the development agreement will cover the driveway, it'll cover any other stipulations that he has to complete prior to closing or sale or transfer of the lot. It will also cover the half of the road that he's required to improve within this development, and in this case, I'm sure he's going to want to negotiate the escrow when he closes. And so there'll be a few things that we'll talk about at the development agreements stage.
Anybody else have any thing they'd like to ask?
I just have a quick question. So it's a shared driveway?
I believe, and Matt, maybe you can, I don't remember whether the lot line is in the middle of the driveway, or how you actually did that when you did the lot line.
It's a little bit cluttered because we've located the existing driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that common lot line will be following the alignment of the existing driveway, so then it would be a shared driveway.
So we'd have an agreement?
Yeah, we'd have to have an agreement.
All right.
Question, if one of the lot owners chooses to sell and subdivide that, then they would have, with it being split in the middle, they'd have to make that into a city road for both, for the whole driveway?
In this, in this particular case, it was 220 stacked on each other, so there is quite a lot of land.
Right.
And there was an option of a different way of subdividing it, so they would make more lots. They've chose only to do this particular subdivision, which is basically 220s. It's just not your normal configuration for 220s. In the future, should they decide to subdivide, it would depend on where they took their road frontage from, as to where the driveway would be, and where they would take their access, as to whether or not they need a shared driveway, or whether they would have their own driveway, because along the westerly line, there's ever, no, extra street. And although that road is not improved, there's already two houses off that unimproved roadway. There would be, have to be a road improvement, but, you know, Dean, I can't remember whether they had enough for one new lot, if they did it that way? Or did they not have enough road frontage for it?
Are you speaking to the two lots to the west?
Yeah.
There's a lot of wetland up there. I didn't look at it again now to determine what that potential is, but it, you'd be building three-eighths of a mile road, and if you only were able to get one lot, that'd be very expensive. In this case, if a road were proposed even for a portion of the distance on this common lot line, there could be four additional lots, but you weigh the cost of, first of all, having the money to build the road, and the city, because it would become a city street, would want a letter of credit or some other performance guarantee, so you put up twice the cost of the road, and for most people, and I understood this when I talked to the land surveyor originally, it's just too much money to consider now. Nothing would prevent either one or both parties from coming in on that same alignment and putting a public street, requesting to do that, to subdivide the property. They could do it independently of each other, or together, by expanding that 33-feet easement into 66 feet, but they'd now go from just a common, shared driveway agreement into shared cost agreement to extend a public road. I think there's four or five lots that could be created in the future.
This 220s, or is it like a 26 and a 12, or something?
One is 12 and three, yeah, 12 and one is 20.
Currently, it's 220s. And with lot averaging and whatever agreements, you know, you could come up with a lot of the lots in the front portion of the property representing much larger, so long as it met the other lot dimensions that we have. So they could go down to two and a half acres, and I don't remember the street frontage that we came up with, but it would be considerably less than simply saying, well, let's carve out five-acre building sites through the plan unit development procedure. You could get more lots on less public road that would be built.
Just a question, so I guess what you guys are saying is that the, on the map where it says extra street, if we were to develop any more parcels in front of the existing house right now on that side, and we were to use that, the extra street as the main entrance to the driveway, we would, even if we just added one more lot, we would have to improve that road, right?
Right now, we have proposed two private drives, even though it's one drive, so we get two people sharing this. Right now, we've got two sharing that. If there's a third lot built, somebody's got to build a road. This new parcel that you would be selling to somebody could have direct benefit if those parties decided to participate in building a portion of that road. That would be an option. You have the other option if these parties agree to add another 33-feet easement and make that a public street. If only one of you decided to do that, a street could go parallel to it, or there are a number of options. So the future development potential isn't eliminated.
But it's adding one more driveway on extra street, that would create that to be a city road, correct? Because there's two already.
Right, and the likelihood of a third parcel benefiting to pay for that much road, at least three-eighths of a mile, doesn't make much sense, based on what your lot prices, not the home value, but just the lot prices are. But if you had five new lots on this common lot line in the future, it might make sense to get together the two properties, agree to pay for a road and extend it, doesn't have to go all the way, but you'd be putting a cul-de-sac in, and then their private drive could still come off the end of a cul-de-sac. So it's a much shorter option with two parties benefiting on your shared driveway than it would be on the west side.
Any other comments or questions? Barb, anything?
Are you planning on selling this to just an outside party, or are you making this more like a family-type development?
You know, I don't know exactly for sure what the future holds, but probably to family members for now, but I don't know, I can't predict what they're going to do in the future.
I see. But your plans are just the two lots?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, originally, like, I thought, you know, I was going to develop into like three or four lot, but just the cost of the road improvement is just outrageous, and I can't afford that, and so I think we're going to be, end up with just two lot. I think that's all we're going to be able to do, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. No other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Xing Li, if you guys could have a seat back there, we'll open up the public hearing with the right that we can call you back up. Okay, it's time to open up the hearing to the public. Anyone who has an interest in this matter can step forward and present testimony as evidence on this issue. Does anybody like to step forward? Seeing none, we'll close the meeting, the public hearing, with the right to reopen. Now we'll have a discussion. Do you have anything to say there?
No, I don't. I don't see any issues. No, I don't see anything.
And I don't see any either. Does anybody, I, if we can ask you another question, you've read all the recommendations by the engineer and all that?
Yeah, I did.
And you understand it?
No, I just, you know, I didn't really read it, but not the exact details, though.
But you did receive the copy and all that? Okay, thank you. Well, with that in mind, does somebody want to make a motion, or?
Just real quick, is there anything you had to add to this, Dean, that we might be missing, or?
You know, not unless you had questions. I think the applicant raised the question, how soon do some of these things need to be done? Those that relate to the development agreement need to be done before the final plat can be recorded, because they're going to be recorded against both properties, so all future owners would have the same obligation that we're placing on this. So just so you understand, you need to talk to an attorney and get that easement agreement in place, the maintenance agreement for the road. The development agreement would also include either, not a waiver, but an acknowledgement of a possible, it's not a pending assessment, but if Pine Street is ever improved, you would be subject to that, and we put that in some form in the development agreement. And all of that needs to be done before you could file the plat with the county. And then regarding the other question, the other permits, I just reiterate, because this is, you know, in a watershed district, they would be looking at specific requirements when they see your construction details. Those are different from what our building official would have. And separate from the watershed, if your total disturbance of the property exceeds one acre, then you need a permit for storm water through the Pollution Control Agency, so you got other agencies involved. And so we just specify all this as a heads-up to you, because somebody comes after the fact, if you've disturbed more than an acre and you didn't have the NPDS permit, you get in trouble. You pay a penalty. And, you know, your surveyor knows these things. I think our engineer found one comment, and it's another reason why we say it's subject to Anoka County Survey Department. One or two of the items he specified would be an error that would be caught by the county when you do file it, and so if we can help you catch those and you clean up the errors before you go to the county, then usually there aren't any changes. That's it.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. So where do we go now, Elizabeth? We just make a motion and?
It would just be a motion to make a recommendation to the council.
Okay, but do we have to add in this new letter, March, dated March 4th today? All of these, or is this?
You can, you can, you would, based on the memo that Dean has provided, and then you can also indicate, it's based on the memorandum dated February 27th, and the updated engineer's letter, and I think it's actually dated today.
All right, the one dated the 27th, and the one, updated one on the March 4th today. Anybody want to make that motion, or?
I'll give it a shot. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion that we, the Planning Commission, move forward for approval. The, I gotta get my glasses on. The subdivision for Mr. Li, property location 5223 Pine Street Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota, with the findings of fact. 1 through 25, and the recommendations, 1 through 10. The engineer letter dated 227, and the updated one dated the 4th of March for approval.
Anybody like to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made. Does anyone like to discuss the motion or amend it?
Okay.
Nope.
Okay, we'll take a vote on that for the recommendation that the city council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Hearing none, we'll pass it on to the city council for our recommendation. So next Wednesday is a council meeting, and if you could be here, you'd probably find out where we're going. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Item number six on the agenda is a continued discussion on I-35 District Zoning Discussion Packet, pages 1 through 26, and enclosure number two, Commercial and Industrial Zoning District Uses Workshop. And I think Ben takes control here.
Benny and the doggy.
You're on.
All right, and the first thing that I'm going to address is the most recent enclosure slash addition. I'll pull it up on the screen here. It looks like this. It's a copy of the map that we produced back in January of the proposed zoning districts. It's just on a, yeah, an eight and a half by 11. Yep. Cam's got the right one. Shelley, Chris does.
That's the right one?
That is the right one.
Not this one?
Nope, smaller Janet.
Okay, so we're going to go smaller. This one?
This one.
Yep, yes, yeah. All right, so at the bottom of that, you'll see, so I believe Elizabeth recently got a formal request by a property owner to make that lower lobe of what we have right now as B1, well, actually, what we have from our last meeting as highway commercial, they had, we had a formal request to make that the light industrial district, like it is on the east side of the street. This kind of request will probably also have, not that they're just flooding in right now, but we will have a, at the amendment of this ordinance, we'll have a public hearing where there may be more requests like this, or some may filter in like they have now. But this is a really good first example for a request such as this, and really what they're asking is, do we, as the Planning Commission, city council, believe that this is something that we'd want to do? And right off the bat, something that Elizabeth and I noticed is, this is in what our land use plan has as commercial. So the answer we just want to have on record is, we would not be able to really entertain this any further, because it would be against the land use plan and our comprehensive plan to make this anything other than a commercial district, so light industrial would not work.
Can you give us more information about why the request was made?
Yeah, that was.
I think, Elizabeth, you might have more information regarding that?
This landowner felt that the industrial uses would be better for sale purposes. The previous 20 years, it's been, it's been commercial showroom, so he felt that perhaps being industrial would be a better direction. And in this case, and I do, I do think we talked a little bit about it not necessarily being a commercial showroom use, perhaps having a little bit more flexibility with outdoor storage in the B1 district versus the commercial showroom district, which was the previous district, which you're going to talk about C3 now this evening. As far as an industrial use, however, the land use plan, not the zoning districts, but the land use plan, you have this guided as commercial, which is the red, not purple. So it would be hard to have an industrial zoning district on top of a commercial land use plan. So unless you are going to amend the comp plan to accommodate this, you wouldn't be able to entertain that request. What you could entertain, however, is maybe some more flexibility in outdoor storage, perhaps, or in your B1 district. I don't know, I don't remember the actual uses in the B1.
No, so actually, in that, this was another option, like Elizabeth's saying, another thing that you could entertain is, at our last meeting last week, we discussed why not make that whole area more, so yeah, the first option is having a little bit more flexibility for industrial uses or outdoor storage more, moreover, in the highway commercial district. Or another option is, I can pull this up real quick, at our last meeting, we discussed making that area all, let me just pull up that map, but made that area all C3, so one option is to maybe go back, not to continue flip-flopping, but rather than amending uses or changing what we might think for outdoor storage standards in the highway commercial, we could bring that back into a business district again, bring that back to B1. But yeah, I think those would be your two options, or a third would be amending the comp plan to make it an industrial use.
And can you remind me, we, we went to the C3 because of the visibility from the freeway?
Correct.
Okay.
So yeah, the motivation behind C3 is, you're coming in right off of 35W North York, going southbound, and you're right there on the freeway. The business district is more, not, it has less design standards or less higher quality of design standards, where the highway commercial, because it's right there on the freeway, had a little bit higher quality design standards, so the motivation was to have that be all highway commercial.
Elizabeth, can you remind me, the, the land, I mean, is it, is there a fair amount of upland here?
There is. Right now, it's, there is two houses that are closest to West Freeway Drive, so what's a little unique about this property is, you have property that's right against the freeway, but then you have two lots adjacent to West Freeway Drive, and they are owned by different landowners. So it is kind of a little bit of a unique area, that not every lot has highway frontage in this particular district. I don't, I don't know, Ben, if you, if you hit identify, maybe just on the?
This one right here?
One of the lots there, lit then, because it's hard to see the property lines.
Oh, yep.
So that's one property that does not have highway, you didn't mean highway visibility?
Mm-hmm.
But yet, it's, it's in that district. So there's actually two of them, there's two houses there that will not have freeway visibility.
Let us see.
But it is farmed, so it's, it's not like it's all wetland and that it would never be developed.
So in the area that they want to change, there's a total of how many parcels? Four? Five?
Five.
Okay.
Yeah, five. Or it could be, there's these two slivers right here, so seven, but one, two, three.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. You're right, there are some slivers on this, on that side.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, seven.
And the slivers are not just right away, or easement, or anything?
That would make, that would be far too easy. But no.
Are they buildable? Are they buildable?
They're not, they'll have to be combined. You know, when the freeway went through, unfortunately, they didn't, you know, they weren't on boundary lines. So what happened is, they're just, they're just slivers or remnants of lots across the freeway.
They must be owned by somebody, though.
I know that one of them has been tax forfeit, has been in tax forfeit for quite some time, at least one sliver, and the other ones have been combined, like bought and combined. This one, I'm not sure, this one I can't remember.
I'm seeing MFC investments for both, as the owners.
Oh, yeah, so Bruce, Bruce bought them, okay, so then they're combined.
But even combined, they're not buildable?
Yeah, they would just, you know what I mean, be combined with the larger acreage.
To the west.
Yes.
Yep. So Elizabeth, does there need to be a formal decision, or...
I just, you know, there's, here, it's just feedback, you know, during this discussion. There'll be another opportunity if Bruce wants to make something formal at a public hearing, but because he emailed and said, you know, I'd like to make a formal request, I felt it was appropriate that at least there was some feedback given to this discussion since you just discussed it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
So right now, the stance is it's C3?
Correct, highway commercial.
Light industrial. Oh, the request.
That's the updated map. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So right now, we're still keeping it C3?
Ah, all right.
Kind of the consensus?
Okay.
I don't know if we're gonna have more discussion, or...
All right, so with that consensus, then I'll move on to the second page of that handout, which is two definitions that I said I would reach out to Dean and ask for guidance on regarding financial institutions and then wood chipping, specifically wood chipping for kind of an off-premise service wood chipping company. So if anyone has any comments after reviewing those both, if there's something you think we should change, if you liked them, I guess you wouldn't have to say that, you could just say you agree with it.
I'm sorry, say again what you're looking for?
If you have any comments, if you want to change any of the wording, or if you think this covers what we...
On the definition?
This one.
The, on the other page.
The new one.
The new one?
Yeah.
The second page? Oh, this, got it.
Ben, I think we mentioned two check cashing places that we didn't want.
Yeah, and that's...
Quick loan or payday, excluding, right?
Yep, excluding quick loan or payday loan services using high...
Are they the ones that have the sign that links and says, "Check cashed here"?
Okay.
I've never been in one, so I didn't know what they did.
Definitely excludes that, excludes those two.
Unless you think there's a more specific... Thing, otherwise I think...
Well, I think the intent is still there, is it not? That that's the same type of business, correct?
But some of them actually cash your paycheck, like if you don't have a, a bank account. So that's not really a loan.
No.
Well, isn't that, yeah, I suppose. The payday loan places do that.
My assumption was you might not be concerned about somebody that's simply cashing checks. The objection tends to be preying on people with high interest rates, and they are loans. You're getting your paycheck two days early and you pay half of it back in these types of services.
Right, but in the check cashing places, they will cash your check, but they also take a fee.
Yep.
It's like 10% or something. So that is different than a loan. Just mention, thought I'd mention it. They're kind of, you know, iffy places. They're preying upon people that can't open a checking account to, you know, there's, if you go to your bank where you have an account, they don't charge you a fee to cash your check, but these places do. So to me, it's kind of objectionable.
So how would you word that? You can't really say check cashing places, because that would be...
Kind of businesses, is it?
Still attached to a higher interest rate, we're just not, we're not talking about check cashing only. This, I'd have to think about that.
They must at the file or something as a certain type of business, right?
I would assume so.
And they can't be, they're not an SNL, and they're not a, you know, credit union, and they're not a...
I don't know if they get licensed or not, I honestly don't.
Well, maybe that's where you go, is, you know, the financial institution with licensure.
Could you just use words like, you know, that you're excluding a fee-for-service check cashing business or service? Because that's what they are, they're a fee-for-service, I think.
You might be able to just add "or" "check cashing" in between payday loan and services, because they use high interest rates for low credit. I think they'd all fit the same. I didn't know that you ever had just the "check cashing."
Well, I think they flash the light that says "check cashing," but I don't know what the name or what the original business is, but they do have a big sign that...
Most of them also do Western Union.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, Walmart does it.
Yeah, I mean, transfer money and, I mean, there's usually...
Sounds like a big fee.
Yeah, and there's usually more things than just that, that you can do.
Yeah.
So what did you say you would add, Dean?
I would just, after payday loan, put "or" "check cashing." Add "or" "check cashing," services using high interest rates for low credit requirements.
And that's...
It would fall into that category.
I think that's...
That should cover it.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any comments on financial institution? So going on to wood chipping, anything there? Any comments?
So when you say excluding the storage or sale of wood chips, I thought that was part of the issue, the storage of them.
Well, this is, this is categorizing this particular use as an off-premise service business. So this ties into your other description. So because you're talking about the freeway corridor, my assumption was, you don't want the wood chipping piles, but you wouldn't care if a person that owned a wood chipper and did that as a part of other off-premises service business, you wouldn't care about that.
Right, they left the chips there.
So they bring the chipper back, but not the wood chips.
Correct.
Or the trees.
Okay.
Now, having said that, all of these businesses will come back to the yard overnight with the equipment. Well, with the equipment, but they'll have, often, because they're chipping until it's dark, they'll come back and they got a dump truck full of chips, but they're not putting them on-site. That's the distinction. This doesn't account for something that might be on Lake Drive, that might be a wood chipping business on that site to chip and to sell. This is an off-premise service business. So we haven't solved the other problem, if wood chipping as a business itself with onsite storage, if you don't want that, that's a different definition.
Okay, that's what I was thinking this was.
Yeah, now, this, this was trying to distinguish in the laundry list of uses for the freeway corridor, and then those definitions of specific types. This falls under an off-premise business, like any kind of a landscaper that's not keeping any stock and trade. So you could allow wood chipping as a use based on this definition, and it does not include the storage or sale of wood chips. But I'm just cautioning, they'll come back with a truckload of it.
Yeah.
It's like a sewer cleaner might come home with a full honey wagon overnight and dispose of it.
This is more like a contractor.
That is correct, as it's described as an off-premise service business, which you have a description of.
So do we plan to have another definition for what you described before?
Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying, in connection with other businesses in the commercial industrial district, which we haven't been talking about, if you had an application for somebody that was a contractor business, and we have many there, Elizabeth described earlier, not a wood chipping business per se, but one that was doing composting, there are nasty problems associated with it. It's a quality control issue. I don't know if you have the same concerns about a business that might be doing wood chipping, but we're not implying that this is allowed anywhere in the freeway district.
That was organics.
Pardon?
The business that I had an issue with was in organics.
Yep, they took lawn clippings and leaves.
And leaves, and mulched them.
And had bags that hadn't been opened for a long weekend, and then boom.
Plastic bags with green grass, and they baked them, and then they opened them, and it was turned into ammonia. For a long time, because every time they, every time they turned the pile, that smell came back for months.
So the fact that we're gonna have the language that if it's not listed, then it's not permitted, we define this, we list wood chipping, anything that doesn't match this would not be permitted.
I think Ben said at the meeting, "I missed last week," this came up, and so that's what I tried to put my thoughts to. We're talking about the freeway corridor, and if you're talking about somebody that's receiving wood and grinding it and coloring it and then selling it or distributing it in some fashion, I don't know if that's allowed anywhere. We're, we're gonna find out shortly.
Well, that would be manufacturing. Or processing.
Yeah, we're gonna have to look at that, and there may have to be some other considerations, but since this is focusing on the freeway corridor, we're not, we're not specifically allowing anything other than potentially an off-premise service business
Okay.
involved in wood chipping.
All right, so then the next thing to go through, and you were jumping ahead there, Janet, is the industrial use definitions and commercial use definitions again. So if there are any comments on those from our last meeting, I think I was able to catch all of the ones that I was, that I missed from the last one and update them. And then I think I incorporated all the comments for both industrial and commercial from the last meeting as well. But if there's anything you think I've missed, definitely...
There's a couple.
Okay.
At least by my notes. Saunter Manufacturing, I had, I had that we crossed off "limited." We were, limited consumer use, because we didn't know what that meant, so we were getting rid of the word "limited."
Oh.
I don't know if anybody else had that, but I, I was comparing it to my notes from last time.
And you're asking for what? Remove limited?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think the discussion was that we didn't know what "limited" meant, so we just got rid of it.
Yeah.
Consumer use, yeah.
Yep. And, and then on number five...
Nope, just, and consumer use, so limited.
I'm sorry?
I'm just letting him finish.
So under number two?
Yes. Okay, to move on?
Yeah.
On number five, the outdoor testing facility, I don't know why this one is so near and dear to my heart, but... The outdoor, it may not be enclosed, so you have an enclosed outdoor area or, or part thereof, it could also not be enclosed.
Enclosed, okay.
Yeah, so...
I guess I was just thinking of the districts that we do see laboratories prop up, and it does, it is, I think, currently, and we haven't got there yet, so that's why, but I think it is in the highway commercial and the business, both which do have some kind of frontage towards the highway, so I was just thinking, design standards.
And then, well, I mean, I think it's probably worth talking about, because if there's no building on there, it would be a pretty low-intensity use of the land.
Yeah.
But, so that was one comment, and then the other within that same one is, in the third line where it says, "with an accessory indoor laboratory," I was thinking it could be with or without an accessory, because some of them are just an outdoor area. Yeah, so do with it what you will. Those are my two comments on that.
Okay.
And then I had one on number 10. First of all, 10 is crossed out, but I don't think you want to cross 10 out. And then in the second line, where it says, "delivered to be redistributed to retailers and wholesalers," I think I wanted it to say "and/or wholesalers."
What I had for notes there was, just removing the "or" directly to consumers, I guess I didn't see that one.
Yeah, I just thought it could be just to wholesalers, or just to retailers, or to both. So that was the "and/or." I know it's picky, but...
It's not a problem. And then Dean did just remind me, and I'm gonna jump back to number two for manufacturing. I think where "limited" came in, and I failed to remember this at the last meeting, was with manufacturing, it is because we're primarily doing the final products to the businesses and for business use with limited consumer use. Because it's manufacturing, we're thinking, you're taking the raw materials and the pre-manufactured components and turning them into the final products that are gonna be primarily for businesses rather than the consumers. So if we remove "limited," it would read more "final products primarily for businesses and consumer use." And I think the original intention was to just have it be for the businesses with, again, taking that "limited," which we have in other definitions, and, because we don't want to exclude them, but manufacturing, you see more associated with larger businesses rather than direct consumer retail.
So where does like, and I think Mattress Warehouse or Original Mattress Factory was brought up as an example, where would that, I mean, they have the manufacturing, but they also sell primarily to consumers.
And I think that's where the limited consumer use came in, is I think there's some of those businesses, but I think manufacturing on the industrial level is more associated with the business, manufacturer-to-business relationship. But if we do feel strongly that "limited" should still be removed, and there are enough businesses that we wouldn't want to exclude by having "limited" in there, we can remove it as well. I was just reminded by our original thought process.
And I, I think, I think, like, mattresses falls under such as clothes, shoes, furniture. It's not really raw product. I mean, they're buying fabric, they're buying coils of spring, they're buying wood, and they are producing or assembling those into a product. So I think that is a light industry description rather than a manufacturing.
Okay.
There's very few that fall into manufacturing. It's all raw product, and that's concrete, asphalt, things of that magnitude, steel, where I grew up in Indiana. That's, that's true manufacturing. The rest of these are assembly and production, but I don't, if that doesn't answer your question, I might have missed your...
No, I, I understand it better now, I'm just wondering whether, and I, I still think the word "limited" is confusing, so I wonder if it's primarily for business use and to a lesser extent, or something like that, to indicate that that's not their primary...
Yeah, that was the intention of the word "limited," was the opposite of "primarily."
Yeah.
And if there's a better word, that might say it, but we don't want to say it's primarily for commercial or consumer use.
No, I, no, I understand that.
So do you think to a lesser extent?
I mean, to me, that's clear, but that's just me. Instead of "limited"? Am I the only one that doesn't like that word and thinks it's confusing? Because if that's the case, I mean, it's not...
Elizabeth, what does it mean to you when somebody comes up the corner?
Limited would, you know, I would say that it, it's not gonna be over 50% of... of whatever they're doing. If it's limited, then it's limited to a certain amount and not the whole.
So you're okay with the word?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me.
Let's just leave it then.
Want to add very?
I'm sorry?
Very limited.
Oh, very limited?
No, 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 no.
Very limited is 10% or 20%.
It gets closer to showing 70%.
Well, is that what we mean, is like a 10 or 20%? Because maybe then you do want very.
In my mind, if you're, I mean, that's what you're, to me, that's what I'm measuring. And like a home occupation, you say 20%. To me, that's limited when you're home occupation, you can only use 20% of the house.
Mm-hmm.
So what number do you want to put in there?
Well, I guess the question is leave it as limited or leave, or have it be very limited. As you said, limited means less than 50% to you.
Yeah.
Very limited would be more like 20%.
Well, why not put the number in there? Limited to 50% consumer use. Then there's no questions asked, it's not your opinion. Is that good or not?
I, I just, I don't know how you would quantify.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there are certain instances where somebody is operating a gravel pit, and it's primarily there for road projects and other things, but some of those gravel pits allow consumers to come in with a small trailer and fill it up, take the sand out that they never use. It's more of a service, but I don't know, I don't know how you'd come up with a percentage. Is it on the size of the pile? Is it the value of the product? It's really hard to quantify those. And I hate to say it, but I mean, we, we do try to be vague so that, again, the bottom line, if you get sued, it is a judge who makes a decision, and they always base it on what the typical definition or common definition is. And limited means less than, primarily means more than, and those are kind of standard terms. But the minute we all agree to this, your attorney may rewrite it anyway.
I like to stay away from percentages if we can, just because, well, I mean, I guess, like I said, I think it's limited or very limited. So either's fine with me, I guess. I don't care. I think if we expect it to be an unusual, I would keep it as very, because that's really clear that that's the exception.
Okay.
All right.
So this is, so this is in the highway, where we saw in the highway district, or is this?
Industrial uses.
Oh, and industrial uses. I was thinking in reference to Bear Holmes, because he wants retail.
Right, yes.
And so in my mind, that would be very limited retail.
Right, that's right.
And that's the whole purpose of this, is to make it easier for you to make a decision at the desk.
Just a little bit.
Yeah.
Did you have any more?
Uh...
Now your comments on 10.
Just the and/or wholesalers.
Okay.
No, yeah, I'm good otherwise.
Did anyone else have anything else for industrial or commercial?
Oh, are we moving on to commercial?
Yeah, I was just including both in that.
Oh, we were just, oh, okay. I'll let somebody else go first on commercial.
We got rid of those words.
Use it in there, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, no.
Did you have stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Nobody else has one? Okay. All right, so on commercial for number five.
Every year.
For number five.
Yeah.
I would just add operation of day-to-day activities, just because devoted to the day, to the day-to-day activity, it's the operation of the day-to-day activities. Again, it's not, it's just picky. And I don't, I don't know, I have a, I don't like the recognized professionals, because I don't know what that means, and I was trying to come up with a better word. So I was thinking credentialed. You know, basically, they have a license, they're certified, they're something, more than just, I don't know what recognized means. So if, if somebody else has a better word than credentialed, or if there has a word that, a meaning that I'm not thinking about. But I think what we want to say is that they have some sort of professional oversight, either through a license or certification or a something.
I think with the beginning of that being a building occupied by licensed, registered, and other recognized professionals, it's grouping that other recognized professionals, that they are similar to a license. So it is, like you said, you don't like the word recognized, but it is something like credential that we're associating the recognized with the license.
Mm-hmm.
I can't remember why, but I know we did bounce around this on the first meeting too, and someone had an argument for not saying certified or, or credentialed, because not every one of their professional activities does have a license, or it was the license can vary county by county, city by city, or state by state.
City by city, yeah.
So rather than generaling someone and kind of making it harder for them to fall into that category or that definition, we wanted to just say you are similar to a licensed professional, or you're like a licensed professional, but you don't have to be.
You want to, you want to try accredited?
No, I, credentialed is what I had, because I thought credentialed isn't, I mean, nobody has credentialing. Credentialing is more of a descriptive term to say you've got some, you know, oversight organization that basically says that you can operate as whatever it is you are, you know. It might be a licensing organization, it might be a certification, it might be.
Accredited?
Yeah, or credentialed is what I said. Credentialing's a word, I, you know, you use it a lot in medicine where, or medical situations, people are credentialed, but they have various different licenses and stuff. It just means that they're authorized to do what they're, what they're doing by somebody who's got the authority to do that.
Other authorized professionals?
I just, I thought recognized was too nebulous, so I was trying to come up with a word that was not as, as specific as certificat, certified, but more specific than recognized. And I just, I landed on credentialed, but it doesn't have to be that. I just couldn't come up with a better word.
Okay, so credentials is like an adverb instead of professionals is a noun. You were, you were going to say other recognized credentials?
No, other credentialed professionals.
What about accredited? Again, I, isn't that broad enough to include?
Because I think accreditation is a specific, just like a license is a specific thing that you get, and I think of credentialing as a more descriptive term of all of those things.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I don't, I don't know. I'm not arguing, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Well, let's put a note and ask the attorney. He may know. They're usually worded people. So.
Yes.
Credential or accredited, or what?
I just, I think, I just think recognized is too weak.
Accredited. You said accredited.
Yeah. And then on number 12. I didn't know, do, do we need to say something about that the orders are taken at a counter or via electronic communication? I mean, it's not, they're not, you know, there's not waitstaff there, and I, I just didn't know if it was, if it would make it even that much more clear that you call in an order, or you go up to a counter and do an order, and then you, you know, you may sit down and eat it, or you may take it with you.
So you're asking is whether or not we should add the mechanism in which they use to take.
Right, so, so the way that I wrote it was a restaurant with or without seating, where orders are taken at a counter or via electronic communication.
I don't know if we necessarily have to add that, because those are the two primary, primarily ways that you do do that, and I think by leaving it out, you're allowing both of those to go into those categories. Do you have any other thoughts on that? I mean, I don't see the harm in adding it, because as far as I'm aware, app-based, electronic or over-the-phone is one way to order, the other is at the counter, like you said in both of your examples, but I think without, you don't, I don't know if that's necessary to point out.
I think the reason I was thinking of it is because there are full-service restaurants that also let you do carry out orders, and so I just thought it was, if you were really trying to sort of categorize that kind of a staff, yeah, keep it, it would keep it very separate. I mean, I'm thinking like Punch Pizza is a good example of, you know, they have waitstaff, they bring the or, they come, you, you go to, you go to a counter to place your order, they bring it to you if you're going to eat it in, but they, but you can take it with you if you're going to take it out. So to me, that's more of a carryout restaurant than one where you're, you've got waitstaff and bar, you know, or it's sort of this full-scale thing. But, I mean, it's.
That's kind of funny, because when I go to Punch, I usually actually sit in.
Do you? Yeah. So I, I don't know, it's, I'm not, I'm not, I just thought it, it made it clear that it wasn't a full-service restaurant that you can also do takeout. You can decide whether you want to make that change or not. And then on number 14, I just thought we'd add lighter fare foods. I don't know, when you say other foods, then it could be like anything. I know you've already said meats, cheese, breads.
Well, you got pickled pig's feet or.
Sides.
Or beets.
Yeah.
And dessert.
Mm-hmm. Okay, just don't worry about it. And then.
It was to try and be the catch-all, that some delis do have things that are not meat, cheese, and bread.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what the description is, but if.
Salads or whatever, yeah. Okay, the, the drive-through on 15, I thought that there's nothing in here that says that you're picking it up in a vehicle, which is what the definition of a drive-through is. So I thought it'd be pickup of prepared foods and beverages in your vehicle or in a vehicle.
You mean as opposed to a bike?
Or walk-up?
Or walk-up.
I don't know.
Or scooter.
I don't know.
The bank doesn't let you come on a bike.
No.
You have to have a vehicle.
I don't think legally you can go through a drive-through in one of those.
Can you?
No.
Or can you say where the food is eaten off of premise? Doesn't matter how you get it out there.
Well, the drive-through, I mean, you care about it, because you've got to then have stacking and all that kind of stuff. So if you're really trying to prepare for vehicles driving through, I think you better put vehicles in there.
Just add vehicle.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's fine, yeah.
According to Wikipedia, the definition of a credential is a document or sort of, or certificate providing, proving a person's qualifications, or that they're suitable for something. What I find, when I, when I did examples of credentials, it says academic diplomas. Academic diplomas, academic degrees, certifications, security clearances, identification, identification documents, badges, and powers of attorney. And that's what their definition of a credential is.
I don't know. Well, I mean, I like the first, the first sentence you said was pretty much what we just said, right? That's what we were trying to get at?
Yep.
Okay, and one last one. The motel hotel, where the compensation's on a daily basis, there are some that will charge on a weekly or a monthly, depending on how they're set up, so I didn't know if you wanted to include that. I know you want to keep away from the hourly ones.
Why is that?
So I get, I get why we, why we start off with daily, but I.
Honestly, in, in my brain, that is exactly it. You avoid the hourly.
Mm-hmm.
In the old days, there were, you never hear about these anymore, but there were kind of the old-fashioned lodging houses, which didn't tend to be the nicest places here.
But now they actually are. There's a, there's a lot of.
But now you have monthly.
Right. For bus, for people who are relocating for like a new job or something, and the company will put them up in, you know, in a hotel, and they'll pay a monthly rate because the person's going to live there for three months, or four months, or whatever it is.
Would you say? And/or extended stay?
Longer term.
Yeah, yeah, something, yeah.
And/or extended stay?
Yeah, or something like that, because I just, because I think we might have that, and I would want them.
On the corridor, you could.
Mm-hmm.
And/or longer term.
Yeah.
Longer term or extended stay? Longer. I like extended stay.
Or why not do daily slash weekly slash monthly? They're good?
I think if you just said extended stay. You could do, that covers it all.
I mean, truly, you just want to stay away from the hourly.
Oh, hourly.
That's all I had in mind.
But I didn't, I didn't want to get into a word war about, well, you said daily, and this was weekly or monthly, and, okay. That's all I have. See what happens when you give us homework assignments?
Yeah.
Exactly what I asked for. Did anyone else have anything?
Yes, what did we end up with for this accredited business?
Thought we were going to ask Bill.
Yeah.
We're going to ask Bill.
Credentialed or accredited or what?
I personally vote for credentialed, but whatever. Wikipedia likes it too.
Yeah. Elizabeth knows what to do. Don't you?
I do.
We're going to the map next. But I think, didn't we just say that we're going to do this instead of?
Yeah.
I know the last time, last meeting, because it used to be one.
Okay.
And we just changed it to the C3.
Planners don't follow.
This guy wants to make it there.
So there has to be a third category, because we don't have registration. Well, even AICP is an accreditation, it is, or accreditation.
So the way it was. Credentialed, I mean, I think it's, it's nice and generic, and it doesn't get into, like, you know, when I was, when I went to school and became a medical technologist, I was certified. Nurses are, I mean, you know, and so I just don't want to get into that level of detail. It's like, they're all, they're all credentialed, we're all authorized to do what we went to school for, and.
And we argued first in the years.
What did you lose?
Registration. Didn't even have an education.
Oh, it's just a pain. Where are we headed now?
That's what I was about to, that's what I was about to say. You want to wrangle them in, Barb?
Nope.
Shh.
Okay.
Shh. Thank you.
Next. Next, yeah.
Does anyone have any comments or reviews on the purpose statements that we did go over on the last meeting? If not, I was just going to jump in and revisit the highway commercial and the business district, right before we jumped into uses, but I wanted to check with everybody first.
No, I'm good on them.
I had one on light industrial. Weren't we going to add the enclosed, the outdoor storage in an enclosed structure to this definition? Looking out for you, Elizabeth. I don't know, that just keeps escaping us. I don't know why.
And that was kind of why we jumped to the light industrial back multiple meetings before, correct, was to include that.
Well, yeah, we wanted to reverse what had been done prior.
Where were you going to add that?
So, and the definition would be, Light Industrial District is intended to provide locations and opportunities for businesses that require more extensive land uses, land uses, outside storage areas for non-retail goods, and then I would put in parentheses enclosed, or in a building structure or something, because what we're trying to, to remedy is the allowing big piles of outdoor, and I, and I wanted, I think we wanted it in the definition, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can probably come up...
The idea of outdoor storage is finished product, not raw materials.
Right.
Whereas on Lake Drive, you allow raw materials and such.
Outdoors.
But that was the, that was the difference in the two districts.
Right.
Right?
That was my only change.
Did anyone have anything else?
On C2, just a housekeeping thing. Got it under justification. Second line should be areas comma while still providing and while shouldn't be capitalized. Hanging out there.
Oh, yeah.
Why we're on that one?
Oh.
On C2, down here, you just want to put a comma and a small W.
Instead of the period and capitalize.
While still providing the opportunity for entertainment and retail sales is not a complete sentence. Unless you attach it to the one for it.
One thing I do, I know we talked about because we're mentioning high design standards and all that, are we going to carry out through?
Yeah, the bottom portion has higher design standards, that last sentence.
Oh, okay. And then...
C3 will have... And I think...
We didn't have any statement in the B1, so that, I guess I had that as a question too, whether or not we were going to come up with something that was like moderately low design standards or whatever you come up with. Reasonable design standards or something.
We don't have it.
Right.
All right, anything else?
What do we put then? Or the design standards?
You were going to come up with some magic words.
Just something like you said, something quality or just, there will be design standards. And maybe I can look at what we currently have for our current zoning districts because they might be addressed in the actual design standards portion of the code when we get to that section. But if we do want to kind of keep with the segue of highest to lowest, that idea to add something. Other than that?
Looks good.
I have a question, Ben, on page 14, general business B1. What's the small animal care? Like a doggy daycare?
Or a groomer or something like that. Or a groomer. We didn't want feedlots. That's why we put small animal.
Want to change it to household, so it's not farm animal?
That would work, I guess. I mean, that's really what we were trying to avoid. Yes. Because you could, you could consider a feedlot that you are carrying for animals because they're there to get fed and fattened up, and we don't want that.
Small household animals, small pet animals?
Just change small to household. If you did small household, you could...
Or pet, I mean, pets about the most common.
And then when you rewrite this, would you, is it possible to move that? Put in manufacturing, warehousing, contractor shops, and small animal care?
Just rework it so it's at the end of the sentence?
Reprioritize it.
It has a better flow.
That matters.
But you don't want a number one?
Pony and a house.
Yeah.
Well, you know, there's a lot of weird comfort animals now.
Right.
They're pets.
Lady with a small pony on the airplane.
Mini ponies.
They're out.
Haven't seen any at my house yet.
I came home one day and one was looking right at the glass.
Where to, Ben?
You know, I still think you might want to say small instead of pet. I mean, believe it or not, people do have pet cows. They have pigs. Pet pigs.
Comfort animals. Pot-pelly pigs.
I don't know.
We could narrow it down to household, and you could say miniature pony or a pig would be household. Small kind of does the same thing.
I'm trying to think of...
There is generally a difference between large animal veterinary care and small animal veterinary care too.
That's kind of where I was coming from, yeah.
Well, they just have to bring the, bring the animal in for Elizabeth to take a look at it.
I don't know, it looks kind of medium-sized to me. Medium animal care.
Small household pet.
So just leave it with small then, without?
I think small.
Small household animal care. Small animal.
No, removing the household, just keeping it as is, just such a small animal care. So we're not restricting it to a pet or a household animal, but still, it's a smaller animal.
And we're really just trying to eliminate something like a feedlot.
Move that to the bottom of the line.
Yeah, reorganize it.
Call it non-agricultural.
It's just not the primary use.
Yeah.
All right, next.
So going into that, do we all then want to go look at the uses for the highway commercial? Which is where we had left off right at the end of the last, unless, that being said, anyone has any changes or edits they'd like to make to C1, community commercial, general commercial, medium density, any other districts we've talked about up to this point? If not, we can jump right into highway commercial uses.
I had one question on C2. Do you want to add truck to the car wash? Or is it really only, just because we have truck car wash on C3?
On C3.
So I, I didn't know if we specifically wanted to limit it to cars in C2, and maybe we do.
I was looking at a lower-impact car wash, but if that's something that we're open to, to have a truck slash car wash in that area, then...
The truck RV car wash.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also on C2.
That's on C2. It's on page 21.
On C2, we don't have urgent care, but on C3, we have urgent care. Is there, is that a special spot, urgent care?
That was just something that had come up during the lightning rounds when looking at where we had broken up the districts. It seemed the general consensus around the table was as we got further down the district is where you saw your larger hospital or clinics or larger hospital or urgent, urgent care. And the clinics were near the...
I just seen that, like we got on 15 on page 21, it says medical clinics, support facilities, and hospital. Then we go over on the highway, C3, we got hospital, urgent care, and assistant. Let me, I don't know, I just thought urgent care, I mean, it's...
We can add it back on general commercial?
I don't know if it was ever there.
It, it was not, no.
You just look at somebody pulling off the freeway, and now they're going to go all the way down looking for it. Of course, that's what we got sign ordinances. Drop a sign.
I'm okay with adding it on C2.
Remember what Ben said, because we all had different terms for maybe the same things. You don't believe that urgent care is part of a medical clinic or support facility?
No, I do.
All right.
But we don't have it in...
It's not specific.
You'd just like to have it listed.
So we have it listed in...
That's all, I just wondered why we...
And then here we have it as medical.
We said it was okay there.
Oh, oh, oh.
So just adding urgent care.
Quite honestly, I think when, when, when we see that duplication, we're going to aggregate them. But we didn't want to exclude anything until we understood. But I would not make a distinction between medical clinic and urgent care. So on one where we had urgent care in addition to medical clinic, that's the one I would personally delete.
Okay, then what about B1's got it too? The 24th's got urgent.
Then it'd be the same thing. So urgent care would be, or medical clinic and support facilities would absorb urgent care.
Dean, do you care, I mean, because a lot of urgent care centers only operate at night or on weekends or holidays, and they don't have a lot of, I mean, generally, they don't have the kind of traffic that maybe a clinic might. So I don't know if you, there might be a reason to keep them separate for that, for that reason, but... I mean, if you have a big, a medical clinic, there's a fair amount of traffic that, and they need a pretty big parking lot, where urgent care centers oftentimes have a pretty small parking lot, and they're, they're oftentimes only open when clinics are not.
Yeah, there, there are getting to be fewer and fewer of those. I just don't, I just don't see them that much. There are overnight pet clinics. There are more of those than the overnight urgent care, it seems today. Because there aren't other options. There's not a hospital, most, I shouldn't say most. Many of the clinics don't operate the urgent care outside of normal hours. You go to the emergency room. I mean, that's become the trend. We can leave that duplication. Your point was, why did you have it here but not here?
Right, right.
My answer would have been, I think we delete it, but if your preference is to leave them in because, then we'll list it. We don't have specific definitions for things like that. We were trying to have you ask about definitions for things that weren't necessarily going to be a line item on a, on a list of uses that are allowable. It's, what, what does wood chipping mean, or what does light manufacturing mean, or, you know? That's what we were defining. So here, I would say they all, if somebody came in and said, we want to build an urgent care, and we said we had medical clinics and support facilities, first thing your attorney would say is, well, that's what that is. Whether you specified urgent care in addition to it, but I don't care. I mean, I really don't. I, I think, Ron, your point was, why did we specifically have urgent care on one and not on the other? You, you tell us your preference and we'll try to keep it consistent.
Medical is okay.
I think it's fine to do it that way too. Yeah, I think just...
You think that covers it generally for what we're concerned about? I do too. I think it's a medical facility.
Well, and who knows what they'll come up with next, so medical would cover whatever they come up with next, so...
So you're just crossing out urgent care, 18 on C3?
Yeah, and, and I think somebody mentioned it was in B2.
B1, yeah.
B1.
We've just tried to clean that up when, when they're close like that. And there are instances where, you know, we're probably not going to specify general offices. Almost any business will have a general office in the building, but we might want to distinguish about medical or professional office. And you may not want those in your retail district. You may want them in the next tier. And that's something to focus on. It's just like if your primary downtown-type district, you, you don't want the financial institutions. I don't think you want the medical institutions. There, they tend to be larger land uses, and you're focusing on entertainment and retail in a small, compact area of your community. That's going to be the final cleanup when this gets organized, and I know Ben's going to talk about that later. But for the time being, should we just take out urgent care?
Yep.
I like that.
Any other comments on the other districts before we jump into highway commercial?
Think we're good?
No, no.
Start on C3.
We can go right into C3 then. So for reference, looking back on the map at the screen, this is where we've changed C3 down here. We're, after a discussion earlier, we're keeping it here right along 35W or right during the split and then north of the split. It is also right where Gander is, a little bit north. And then it is going to be just south of where we have the C2 district now, general commercial, and a little bit on the other side of Orange Street. So now looking, keeping that in mind and the definition that we have, or our purpose statement, going through the uses, do we think gasoline sales and convenience-related retail sales are inappropriate use? Or does anyone see anything, you can just go down the list, or if you had something marked off earlier that you think would not be an appropriate use on this list?
Can you, can you remind me what display of retail goods means as a, as a category?
Oh, yeah. That was supposed to be removed because I think we removed it from our other ones.
Oh, good, because it was like, I don't remember that, okay.
I must have missed that when I was, yeah, I had it removed on C2, and I thought I had removed it on C3 as well.
Okay.
So we're scratching five.
Yeah. Because that is already covered in the...
I'm kind of confused. I thought C3 was going to be like where you had, you know, bigger businesses and that. So the addition of bakeries with primarily direct sales to consumers, I thought it was supposed to be the big bakeries were going to go down here or, you know, big, big business type bakeries. Or where were they going to go?
No, I think you're right.
Right? Okay, so that's eight. And then I felt that 22 and 23 were again, unless we say, I, I didn't think this was going to be a microbrewery down there because I don't think anybody's going to necessarily want to go way down there. I thought we were trying to encourage those places to be in MU1 or C2 or whatever. So I didn't know why 22 and 23 were in there.
Probably the same for the boutique and gift shop.
And then also 30, the art galleries and photography studios, I don't know.
24.
Yep.
Fine, I can stick it in 24.
Yeah. I had 22 and 24 also, 22 through 24.
Are you saying that those are out?
Yes.
And then for bakeries, you wanted to remove that, or did you want to add a different use where it is just...
I was just thinking if, if a bakery, because we had talked about the difference between the bakeries, you know, some, something selling to people versus tasty, you know? And so I thought that, you know, instead of bakeries with primarily direct retail sales, just bakery, you know, commercial bakery, I guess.
Or you could have a CRLA, or you could...
Right. And commercial beer production, commercial alcohol, distillery.
So add those in then.
I think replace 20, or eight, 22, and 23 with those. And then 24, I don't know that you're going to have boutique and gift shops in there.
So these are going to be commercial.
Or a licensed daycare on 25.
Commercial beer, leave in, commercial alcohol production.
Yeah. I don't know about licensed daycare.
Down there?
Maybe it goes farther on B1. We got it down there too.
I think that was just in case there was an assistance with like some, or who knows, with a large office complex or retail area, and some of them do have on the ground floor a...
Got it.
Some kind of childcare facility.
Yeah.
So do we want that as not a primary use then, or?
We haven't begun that discussion.
What about 24, shall I?
I was just saying, I don't see boutiques and gift shops going down there.
Me either.
Restaurants with drive-throughs and...
Yeah.
That shouldn't be in there.
So, and we're going to remove 30 too then? 30 also?
30?
Art galleries, yep. Number 30.
30.
Dance studios are out.
And just to keep in mind, there is still a part of C3 that is in just south of the general commercial district where all these are allowed, where maybe there could be some bleeding in.
Would you say that again, please?
Yeah.
On the map right here, there is right south of the interchange, there is a little bit of highway commercial.
Oh, that's right.
Where we do have general commercial, that it does allow majority of the things that we just crossed off, that if someone were to come in just south of that divide, they, we'd have to then amend everything. Well, not everything, but add it in.
You're talking about an Oxford edition?
About a what?
Is that the business you're talking about, the businesses in the Oxford edition? What businesses are you talking about?
We, I'm just saying...
That would include Oxford and Dan's property.
Yep.
They're immediately adjacent.
To some properties that are also in this highway commercial district.
Well, you have, you have trailer sales, boat sales in there, the quilt shop, exercise, exercise equipment, towing company. exercise equipment, towing company, recreational supply.
Yarn shop?
There's a fabric and yarn shop there, too.
A quilt shop.
Yeah.
Which could be boutique.
Could be boutique.
I forget what, the one not right on the corner, does he sell snowmobile stuff?
There is recreational vehicles down there, too, there's the Forest Lake trailers, and then there's the boats, and there's, I think, servicing or sales of smaller wrecked vehicles.
There used to be an Ardecat dealer or something down there. Wasn't there? Isn't there an Ardecat dealer, or some?
What, what does Jason Hall sell?
Yeah.
Out of that shop? Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
Okay.
Yeah, something like that. Recreational equipment service, sales, we just have service.
So maybe rather than removing boutique, or we could add the commercial bakery, commercial beer production, commercial alcohol production, but also keep the beer production with direct sales and alcohol distillery, and the smaller bakeries, should they want, should anything happen to come in that area, but if you would rather guide it to the other districts as well, I understand that, too, and so we can continue doing that, as we were discussing.
How do you feel about it? Because don't you want to guide them a little bit, to?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't want to eliminate a business that's already there, like the yarn shop, so I think we probably want to, but, but since we don't have any of the little microbreweries and distilleries and stuff, I'd rather see them in the other districts that we've already included them in.
Well, what would you call the yarn shop besides a boutique?
Retail store.
The quilt shop, though, isn't it?
It's indoor, indoor sales and storage of retail goods. Wouldn't you just add it in there?
Yeah.
Alcohol, clothing, I don't know, what do they sell?
Number four.
Fabric?
Yeah, that would make sense.
But isn't it already covered under retail goods to customers?
That's what she's saying, we just add that as an example.
Going down to yarn shops, what's the chances of another one coming in?
I don't think we have to further define it, I think, I think that would cover it, we could still, if we would like to remove boutique gift shop, we could continue doing that, and the yarn shop would be covered by number four.
So we're going to remove the boutique again?
So put boutique back in?
No.
No.
Take it out.
Picking up where we left off, anything else going down the list, and I think there's a second page as well.
Number 46, what does that mean? Does that mean a shooting range?
I took that, that's what I thought.
Yep. We have RV sales twice, you have 45 RV sales, and then you've got recreational vehicles, trailer sales, and service.
For recreational vehicles, I was thinking, maybe I should say smaller, if there's, again, blanking on another definition, I was thinking, your Ardecats, your-
Like ATVs or something? Okay.
But if there's a better definition, or something that might make more sense to the general public, I can put that in there instead.
So 45 means the big stuff?
Yeah.
What's that?
The RVs.
Yeah.
Doesn't that say recreational vehicle, right?
It does, that's what it means.
What is enclosed self-storage warehouse with accessory outdoor?
Fortunately, they make a lot of different kinds of them now.
I know. It's enclosed self-storage, what would they be allowed to?
Like the mini storage.
Like it'd be a mini store.
It's all enclosed?
All one big building, like in the city.
But what does the accessory outdoor storage?
Because that's what, like, mini storage has accessory outdoor RVs now.
Oh, I see, like it, okay.
Okay, so, take out 43.
You said data centers don't belong.
Yeah, data centers would be more in the B1. Data centers are not very attractive buildings, we saw some pictures. Now, tech, tech businesses are different.
I think that could also be-
Through data centers, you've got the big pipes with the water, I mean, it's, it's not a, not a very attractive building.
How is it different, how is it different than like the tech?
Yeah.
Tech centers have people, data centers, oh, you have like four or five people.
Had an indoor training in.
Really?
And, and they have all the water and the pooling units, it's not, it's not always pretty.
I was thinking we-
Get rid of 43.
I think we just put it in a different district, I think B1 or I1, I mean, I think-
Under B1.
Get rid of 43, that falls under that.
Yeah, catch all.
33.
Data centers?
Okay.
As, as opposed to tech businesses.
Funeral home, not data center. 22.
No, 43. 43.
You're going to get rid of data centers?
In this area.
Oh, we want them down further, right?
So it really doesn't, because the C3 doesn't-
So you got funeral homes.
And that's what we were showing. Yep, and that's what we were showing.
A funeral home?
With the data center, with the data center. You know, where that living down the highway, would we allow that in there?
So, so right now.
Talking about this area, you don't want dat- data center in there, a data center?
No, because they said it's just a big box.
You would, you would want it in the I1 or the B1, not the, generally wouldn't want it in the-
You'd want it over here.
Yeah.
It's in B1.
Is that screw up?
We don't.
What's her name, Jaccal's? Okay, I don't want to make Jaccal man.
You know, I don't think you'd want a data center on that, and the ones directly due to the freeways, it just would not be very attractive building at all.
They have large generators and large cooling machines.
I don't know, I never was one of that.
I heard you retax me.
They are, and they're a big, it's a big building, and they only have like a couple employees, and, but, but tech, tech businesses have employees, because they're usually centers, crawling.
Full service.
The windows from the west.
Which would you, which you would want in that area, they're, they're nice buildings.
Well, I think it must have one.
That's a tech center.
I didn't know how far up Jaccal's idea was, and I was just not trying to, it's not very far up for you.
Nope, the, the properties that are listed are right in the other districts for the data centers.
All right.
So we're-
So we're getting rid, we're getting rid of data centers.
Yeah, they said, in the C3.
Yeah, yeah. And then you're asking, this is the, generally the inside of them, a warehouse, and that's why it is just your large, big box.
I just, you know, if, if the county is expecting us, you know what I mean, I wouldn't want to include it.
No, yeah, definitely understand that.
The other thing is, is that you say, well, you're, you know, I know that there's a lot of swampland here, you know, so I just want to make sure that, if it does happen, that Columbus is included on that.
Dean, what is, I know that when we were, when Jesse and I were at the Minnesota Tech Corridor group, so what are the computer, software, what is all that kind of business under?
I was just thinking like Google-
Not a data center, because that's different than-
Tech development or programming?
Programming, computers, manufacturing, I mean, all of those businesses, software businesses, what is, what is that service?
I think what you just said, yeah, it would be a professional office, you'd have, Google has its, or a professional, I'm thinking, if you had an office campus, that'd be like if you had a Google or an Apple campus, it's a professional office where they just have, the, the professional business they do is software, tech development.
Because there is one like on 35 going self-veritas, isn't that what you're thinking of?
Yeah, that's, that's software.
Yeah.
I mean, anyway, semantic, all of them, they got big, huge buildings, but those are, those are all tech businesses.
Yeah, so I think that'd just be professional office, and that would be there, yeah.
And you have those listed in the C2? Professional offices and professional office campus.
We have them in C2, and we have them in C3 also. So that, we're good, all right.
Right.
Do we need to better define garden center?
Define, sorry?
Do we need to better define garden center? You have, in B1, you have garden center slash nursery, but I just wonder whether or not we need to better define that, or more specifically define that?
Or break it up, so it's, there is garden center, and then there is nursery, rather than having it, because, yeah, it looks like in highway commercial, garden center is number 39. Like you said, B1, it does have garden center slash nursery, so you'd think it's a little bit larger.
I guess, when I think, yeah, so when I think of a garden center, I mean, that can be almost anything, and, and, you know, with, with like almost no building at all, but I think of a nursery as actually having structures and buildings and-
Growing plants.
So I think we want more along the lines of-
Nursery greenhouse.
Or something more like that, I think garden centers can, you know, they could almost be a roadside stand.
There's a difference between Bachmann's and, and Waldo's, you know what I mean? So that's, I think that's the-
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking of, too.
Most garden centers think that they're farmers, so they, they end up being ag, they pay no tax, very little tax.
Yeah, they're just pop-ups sometimes in Kaboo, you know, where they just bring in, set up a-
Should we just cross that?
Yeah, you'd promote the nursery back.
Well, I mean, I think a, like a, you know, greenhouse, Bachmann's kind of thing would be fine, I just wouldn't call them a garden center, but I, I don't know, I, I just think garden center leaves it wide open, like, you can almost call anything that, and if we want to be more specific, and we want, you know, a, a higher land use, than just, you know, a bunch of shrubs planted in a little booth that you sell them out of, then maybe you want to call it something other than a garden center.
What's the one that's on 14?
Oh, no.
One in Hugo?
No, the one that, as you're heading towards the north.
You're going toward Anoka, on a left.
When I think of a garden center, that's what I think of.
Yeah.
You know?
No, no, it starts with a, no, it starts with a, what's that?
Yes, Malmberg.
Yes, yeah.
I'd say cross it right over there.
Usually they call them greenhouses, where they have all the buildings, don't they?
That's what I was, I think with garden center, what I was anticipating was that's more of your greenhouse, maybe with seasonal, or storage of pots, potted plants, or soils or other. Yeah, not such as, not as big or as extensive land use of like a nursery where you have the trees growing for sale, either in burlapped and bagged, or you have the smaller 12-inch saplings, so if it would be better, we could either define greenhouse, garden center, nursery, or we could just say, replace garden centers with greenhouses instead, or a greenhouse slash garden center.
Excuse me, but Elizabeth, you say they do the agriculture tax thing, right?
Yeah, like Burgen's, I mean, Burgen's is ag, you know what I mean, and, I mean, that's what they are, they're, they're greenhouse.
So they've got a million square feet, and there not being any-
But they don't, they don't sell to the public, right?
No, they're strictly wholesale.
Is that why they can be considered ag, or?
They're ag because of their use, I mean, they don't, they, all they have is greenhouse. There's very, I mean, yes, they have a teeny office, but mostly it's, it's, it's all green, you know, it's all greenhouse. The same with Green Valley Nursery, they have a very small building, they're also a wholesaler, but they, they do perennials, Burgen's is annuals, so they, two different, two different crop, but, yeah, they have hardly any infrastructure, you know, and-
Ramon Berg's does, a Bachmann's does, even Gertens has.
Or Abraham's, that's on 61, that's, I mean, that's a really nice example of, that'd be great to get them, or a business like them.
Verbiage, what the difference of verbiage would be to one person.
I think we'd have to define it, and then, and then agree if it meets your understanding of, I, I would clearly distinguish a nursery from a garden center.
Yeah.
It's, it's primarily a seasonal operation, it could be under glass like Gertens, or like Burgen's, whereas garden centers may have small greenhouses, we, we get into that definition of primarily retail sales, you know, I think, you know, if, if, if we're going to use percentages in something, that's how I would distinguish the nursery, and leave the nursery in the, in the B1 district away from the highway itself and the garden center is, is more of a destiny, I mean, I, I picture it personally as Gertens or Bachmann's, but Gertens has more extensive nursery than Bachmann's.
Well, maybe we need to add it to our definitions.
That's what I'm saying, I think we'll define what a nursery and, and the garden center is, and then you can pick and choose at that point.
Do you know Tonkadale?
Yeah, I know Tonkadale.
That's what I guess I think of, yeah, that's what I think of when, I'm thinking greenhouse, something like that.
They don't, they don't plant from scratch, whereas Gertens do.
Yeah.
Or Burgen's do, they've got Bush's Roses in Plymouth, that's a huge, huge greenhouse that does roses all year long.
So we can create some definitions.
Oh, excuse me, what do they have for a building, Dean?
Which, like Bachmann's?
Or Bush Roses out there.
The retail sale portion of that is extremely limited, it's almost all wholesale, but you don't want to live within a mile of it, because you can't see a star in the sky, it's all lit up.
Oh, because of the light.
At night. Oh, you're right.
Greenhouse.
But they're a legal nonconforming use, and they're not going to go until Bush decides, and, and I think Len's already died, but it's, it's a, it's a big business.
Yep.
And they have tax exemptions like Burgen's that don't make it necessarily a good neighbor hogging that much prime land, it's not the highest and best use. I'm not saying Burgen's isn't, but Bush Roses in Plymouth is, I mean, is gross underutilization of property. So we need to define that, I've made that note.
Okay, good.
Anything else in highway commercial? And then also going into business, we'll define garden nursery there as well. Now we can go right into general business, and with, as we see that, we can definitely jump back to highway commercial, too, if something else pops up that you'd like to add, or things should be replaced.
So you'll make the changes that we already made from C3 flow through to B1?
And that's, so such as the beer production, change that to-
Or the commercial bakeries and-
Commercial bakery, yeah, I can do that, so, and does that include then striking out everything that we've struck out from, so, 22, or beer production, boutique, alcohol distillery, art galleries, that's what I have.
Just don't want to strike on data centers.
No, yeah, keep those in.
Again, these are getting farther away from the highway and access and, and that sort of thing, so is there a reason why we're keeping gasoline sales, convenience, indoor display of retail goods, bakeries that are primarily retail, restaurant, cafe, restaurant with accessory drive-through, is there a reason why we would have those in those areas in B1?
I think we were going to make the bakery, commercial bakeries.
Yeah. But I'm just saying that the first, one through five, and six and seven, I, I don't see that in those areas, but-
We crossed out display of retail goods in one other one.
Yep, I have that.
So, yeah, he'll, he'll do that, too. So basically, everything we cross down in C3 or changed, he'll have that flow through, except the data center. Unless you want to further eliminate them, is that what you're suggesting, Shelley? So like, take out even commercial bakeries?
Yeah, I, I said, I didn't, I can see a commercial bakery being on those properties. I can't see what it says primarily direct sale.
Oh, right, so that's...
But I, but I'm saying that I, I don't, do you see 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7? Do you see those in those areas? Again, we're trying to encourage people to go up toward the split, and I can't imagine they would want to put stuff down in those areas, actually.
Well, the only other question would be, are you, so if nobody ever wants to do it, great? But if somebody comes in and says they want to, are we eliminating it, eliminating the opportunity?
Well, that gets back to Elizabeth, you know, them coming to Elizabeth and saying, I want to put something somewhere, and we say, well, there would be a better area for it, you know? And if you zone it that way, they're going to be encouraged to do that. And I don't know how much we want to direct people, but...
Well, from the McCombs study, Shelley's exactly right, it's not a retail area. I mean, I think that's her question.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got a lot of retail.
Right, so I would, I agree.
Including, you know, we're allowing all of that in C3.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we're in a, we're in a remote area and we don't have the market for this. I, I don't disagree with you at all. I don't think it's a restaurant area, I don't, I don't think gas stations would come.
No.
I just don't see the retail component.
I don't see a drugstore with a drive-through.
Mm-mm.
What number is that, that's?
22.
Going to take out 1 through...
Art galleries, yeah.
Right, so we're going to take out 1 through 6? And we're going to take out restaurant, actually through 7.
1 through 7?
Are we going to allow bakeries that don't, that, you know, the large bakeries, commercial bakeries?
Yeah, we could...
Yeah.
Commercial bakeries would be fine, but 1 through 4 we would take out, and then 6, 7, 6 and 7?
Right.
Okay.
I'll go back to my argument. You're more likely to have somebody come in for 1 of number 3, an indoor sales, something, grocery, alcohol, medical hardware, everything, than you are to ever have somebody come in asking for a, fill the new tasty bakery. So if you eliminate all of that, is that what we want?
Well, that kind of goes back to what Shelley was saying, do we want to redirect? Do you know what I mean, up towards the split more? Well, you've got to kind of look at that area, do you think that that would, they would want to be there?
No.
But even if they did want to be there, and we, again, want to redirect, to get them to have those type of businesses where...
With like businesses.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think any of those fit there.
I know what you're saying, Jesse, you don't want to take anybody out of the scheme, but, you know, in all like likelihood, are they going, they're not going, why would they want to be down there versus being up?
Yeah, I, I mean, this would be retail.
I mean, if it, if 1 went in, then we all of a sudden had a little development in there, but look what's already in there.
Right.
So what's across the street is, uh, Civil Factory, right?
Yeah, Bear Homes.
Bear Homes and...
And trailer, mm-hmm. And...
Saying you still have left that in C3, the retail that you're, you know, questioning. It's just the B, B1 that...
In C3, we do have gasoline sales and convenience and indoor sales of retail goods, we have all that. So where you can see it from the highway.
On the previous side.
Areas that are away from the highway, both B1's areas are...
And this is an area where it's more transitioned towards industrial, so it's away from highways, a little less retail.
You probably could take out number 18 also.
Bright centers and beer salons.
Similar to retail.
Probably 15, too.
Yep.
Yep, we took 15 out, yep.
And the same argument for the beer and alcohol.
Make it a commercial.
The bigger commercial areas instead of...
Take them completely out, or just the direct sales?
Just the direct sales.
I would just say you add commercial.
Add commercial to it, both of them.
This is probably actually where we'd leave in data center.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we're going to define garden center and nursery.
I took out 22 also, the drugstore.
Yeah.
Yeah, art, and the one above art galleries.
21. Where did you put the indoor golf range?
That was in indoor recreation. Where is that?
72.
C3, number 9.
You had that in C3, firearms. Do you want to change indoor firearms to indoor recreation?
There was another one that was indoor recreation. Have you? Oh, no, we did have it.
Looks like it didn't come over to B1, but it was in C3 as indoor commercial recreation. Driving ranges, batting cages, if that's something was in one.
So you would add that to B1?
I don't know if that's, was that what you were asking, Elizabeth, to...
I was just curious on where that was, I mean, the reason why indoor range is in there is because at One Time Gator Mountain, firing range.
Firing range.
So that would be C3.
As part of their store.
Mm-hmm. And that's in C3, and that, yeah, stays there.
That looks good to me.
There's the second page for B1 as well.
Yep.
So we have commercial recreation, so that would cover...
You told me about last time, where the kids went.
45 is firearms, but then we also have indoor, outdoor recreation, so that could be your goal.
Right, mm-hmm, in both, yeah.
So, so if someone come in and said they want to build a built, big thrill factory, you know, where they, where would you put that?
A big what?
What?
Big thrill factory.
What's that?
It's that.
It's like a big old, big old box that has laser tag, go-karts, trampolines.
Indoor recreational.
But it could go here, number 46.
Next door to the hotel.
I don't mean to be a pain, but...
I saw it added, one of those like little flyer things.
Maybe in Blaine there is.
There is one over, it's not the thrill factory, but...
But that's entertainment, right? And that would be backup in that...
Indoor, indoor...
C2.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Why don't we contact them?
Very fun, family entertainment.
There's one in Mounds View, it's not bad, but it's got trampolines.
I think that would be the indoor recreation or commercial rec and, yeah.
That would be nice by the racetrack.
That's what I just said.
I'm telling you.
I just said put it next door to the hotel. Oh, we took it out of that area, didn't we? They had area, they took it out. Area by the racetrack.
Maybe it's something they would follow up on.
I think in one of your first, last, we had it in like the C2 area, right in there.
Yes, like, did they double building?
I just wondered if that changed by our recreation.
One of them, I think, was an old one or something.
I'd want to...
Calling it out specifically?
I don't, so that's C3 or C2.
C2 and C3.
And we wanted it there, because that's, right next to the...
Yeah, I, I, I don't know why I lied. No, no, although that's...
It's in both, Jesse.
Yeah.
It's in C2 also.
And that's, I think, the only reason is...
Number 7. Yeah, one is there.
But wouldn't, wouldn't in the 2?
C2 and...
You don't want that title.
See right up here and up there, so that would be...
A bowling alley, a shooting range or a big thrill. But I don't see why we worry about it.
You're more, have to get somebody who's...
Or C3, excuse me.
But then they're talking, a place like that should be in C2.
So you're discussing indoor recreation in C2 or something closer to...
We already have it in C2.
We have it in C2 and C3.
And we wanted it there.
In C2?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I know we did strike it, and we did strike it from the high density.
Right.
Somewhere we could...
And we have it in C1.
And get these calls and like, no.
So, again, my question at the end of C3, would, we never did issue the permit for that firearm facility.
They, they ended up building it in Lakeville, and they did not, they did not...
But I mean, that permit expired, but my question, if you had indoor recreation facility, not just indoor firearm, wouldn't that include an indoor firearm, like, like we permitted? And then you could allow in C3, which is a big district, thrill factory, bowling alley, any number of things, the batting cages that Ron keeps bringing up. Do you want to change that on 46 on page 23?
So, Ron, are there indoor firearms facilities that are, are not recreational, they're for training and, you know, like for concealed carry or for security? I mean, is there specific that use, because then it wouldn't, those wouldn't fall under recreational?
Well, that's, that's a tough question, I mean, Washington County, they, all their, are contracted through Ramsey County, they got an indoor one. But, and then you all use the, up here, the gun club off Alliance Street?
Mm-hmm.
You ever hear of that thing?
Mm-mm.
Minneapolis PD spends $50,000 a year there.
So I'm just thinking that might be a reason to keep them separate, if there are actual facilities that aren't open to the public, but they use them for training or for people to get their concealed carry, whatever hours in, and, I don't know. I don't know anything about guns.
So you're saying leaving, leave indoor firearms, but add indoor recreation?
Yeah.
Go for that, Dean?
It's already...
I just don't know.
Indoor rec is already added in, uh, Commercial?
It's in C3.
And what I, what I thought I heard Dean say is, is an indoor firearms part of indoor recreation.
Yeah, but where, where is it?
Maybe there's some that aren't recreational.
Nine.
Leave it, yeah.
Oh, pardon me.
Away from them.
Yeah.
What number?
No, 9 on, on page 22 was indoor.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it, I, I, I was concerned it wasn't in there.
Oh, I have, I thought you were asking...
So, if you want to keep the indoor firearm, that's okay. You, you had asked about, like, police training in Dakota County on the University of Minnesota property, the State Patrol, Dakota County, and many cities have their own outdoor training facility. They also contract with a private outdoor shooting range to use it exclusively, again, for training. But I'm not aware of one down there that is exclusive to indoor, and I don't know that that's a category. I'm guessing some police stations in the metro area have ranges in their buildings. They would not, that, that would be a municipal building, would fall under a totally different definition. Okay, so keep 46 as is, because you already have 9. Yep.
Anything else in the business industrial or business general?
Dan has a question.
Can Dan speak? Who's running the show here?
You are.
We got the mayor right now.
Who's on first?
You know, you're jointly running it, I didn't know if you were going to recognize.
Yeah, we'll recognize, Dan, you got a comment? Yeah, if you were going to have an outdoor, that would, this would be the district, you want? I would say so.
Yeah, that's it.
I guess there's a couple things that I would like to address. I would like to see in there. One, Jan, you referenced it earlier about, uh, expedition trying to include everybody in there. So, I didn't know, because it's kind of like C3.
Um, right now, the way you're permitted, um, you are, you are permitted under a residential zone business for your, for your business, so you're legal non-conforming, and your house is a permitted use, or, you know what I mean, is considered a permitted use, so you can rebuild the house.
That's an off-premise business, that's in there.
Number 28.
It's on the snow removal and lawn care.
Lawn care, mm-hmm.
Yep, that's, that's, that's included in the list for C3. The, the bigger issue, Dan, might come up, because you've got the split use of the property. If you lost the house, and we don't allow houses, you might not replace that. If you lost the business, it's now an allowable use, that's not an issue. But you're different, because you were here for quite some time, and, in other words, we're not, we're not promoting existing homes in the district anymore. We have consciously for 20 years.
Can I get that part of it?
Yep. Yep.
I appreciate that. So, one more thing, what about adding, um, number 43 as well? Number 43, one of which would be small building trade.
What one are you?
I lost it.
C3?
C3 what?
So in B1...
Oh, B1.
Oh, B1.
Oh, B1, okay.
So 43 is small building trade and contact shops, about moving that over to C3?
Our number 43 is laboratory.
Yeah, our 43 is a...
Okay, I'm ready. There is a, a definition under B1 that says small building trade and contact shops. Add over to C3 as well.
Um, 44, we have trade contact tractor shops, plumbing.
So what Dan's asking is, can you move trade contractor, trade contractor shops, i.e. plumbing in, which is now in B1, also add that into C3 as...
And, and that in the written definition, I think that we've accepted, is an off-premise service business. It's not just limited to snow removal, lawn care, it's building trades, it's all of those. That's, that's also in the C3. Part of the, part of the issue is, we all came up with our own terms, put them on a list, and there's duplication in here, and so...
But just worded differently?
Yeah, right, we're going to clean that up. The trade contractor shop that you just cited in B1 is already listed as what we now are defining as the off-premise service business. That would include plumbers, roofers, window installers, gutter installers, any kind of business where you primarily are performing the function off-site. But it also allows a plumber who might just do repairs of wash machines that you bring to his shop.
But I, I think there is going to be a distinction. I think there's got to be a distinction, because on Lake Drive, we have contractor shops. And now you're saying that you have a trade contractor shop in the freeway district. On Lake Drive, you allow contractor shops, like excavators and pipe fitters and people who dig, you know, dig, and so they have large equipment, you know what I mean? And that's what they store in their yard, and they have raw materials. So, I think that, that has to, you have to, you know, at least explain to me the difference when someone's calling me and saying, you know what I mean, I'm, I'm a small trade shop, but I'm, you know what I mean, I have, I have such and such a business, but I have, you know, four big dump trucks, a backhoe, you know what I mean, and I have, you know, lots of equipment that I want to store. Well, that's Ziegler, and Ziegler you put in the light industrial district, so...
I don't know if I agree if that's Ziegler, I mean, let's just take, let's take...
I would say they have far too much equipment to outside. I would be putting that in the industrial district. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be putting it there.
Because they're excavating.
And they're excavating. So I think there's got to be something that there's a line of what a trade shop is and what a contractor, a contractor shop. Because like EJM and all them big pipes, I mean, they have like big construction equipment, I don't think, I don't think that was the intent to put it in B1.
Well, so, but your question is can you move it from B1 and it also included in C3? And I think Dean might have missed, oh, because small contractor shops are not listed in C3.
We've got to come up with consistent language, including what's in the C1. I mean, I said two months ago, we've got to do the same thing for the C1 district. It's just that right now, our deadlines looming in July are to make this consistent.
And I know, but I think, I think we're using the same words for different things.
I do too.
So if you're a, if you sell tile and you're a tile person and you have, and they call, you call them, you have a trade shop and you have a little showroom, but you have a truck that leaves every day because you install tile, to me, or you install windows, that's very different than an excavator that has all this big equipment that digs holes and brings back dirt and big piles of rocks.
This needs to be.
Would that be a construction business rather than?
Yeah, they're probably going to be debate.
I don't know because they consider them, they consider them the building.
And what's small?
That's why I said, I think there's got to be some different, or difference. If you're defining between those, there's got to be a difference. And to me, it's all about outdoor storage.
And, you know, our purpose statement for B1 says small contractor shop.
Right, and that's not in C3.
What is the meaning of that? And also, when you get back, you know, look at it, it talks about higher impact. So interpretation.
Which is why I want, from my own mind, I want to know like what's the distinction? Because in my mind, the distinction is building trade, big, big equipment, Lake Drive. If you're a electrician or you're a carpet shop, a, you know, you sell plumbing fixtures and you have a plumbing truck, then you're a trade shop and you go in the freeway district.
What about City View? I mean, what would they be considered?
City View has no outdoor storage. They come in, I mean, they're a contractor shop. And they're a service. They come in, they load their trucks and they leave, but they don't, they don't, they don't bring back any raw product, you know. Now they're on Lake Drive because they didn't want the higher design standards. And they wanted to build the building they were. But as you can see, everything's enclosed, except for lifts. I don't know why they put the lifts outside.
Because they're for rent. That's why.
So I think part of the distinction, and this may have to be made, again, allowing something in the C I district, which we've traditionally called contractor shops, and eliminate that term, and distinguish between a larger contractor that's not doing work primarily at the customer's location. You're talking about pipeline companies. You know, they're doing projects for cities, for big companies, transmission lines, other things. And they have bigger equipment and more equipment and they store pipe. That's what we have to define here. But I think your description right now, off-premises service business is a business that provides labor maintenance, repair, other services primarily at the customer's location, including lawn care, snow plowing, appliance technology, delivery, catering, plumbing and sewer services, and similar. So in that definition, a lot of those businesses on Lake Drive qualify, but a handful, the big ones, are not what this is talking about.
But we told Horticultural Services, we didn't want them there.
We didn't want them in the retail district, but we wouldn't exclude them from the B1?
You didn't want them in the C3 district.
Right. And originally, the B1 was all C3. I mean, it's commercial. We just kind of did a transition.
I think, I think the question he has is can what we would allow in B1 go in C3?
Yep.
I'm not saying everything, but.
No, but those specific examples.
I guess I'm just trying to have a broader audience that I could try to sell my place. That's where I'm trying to go with it. Like the small, the small building trade contractor shop, like we spoke about, a landscaper. So again, what are called services, they're landscaping. I mean, if I understand Dean correctly, with the offsite service, they would fall underneath here or they would fall underneath my CUP.
They're not going to fall under your CUP. I can tell you that. Because the way your CUP was issued was under a residential zone business. And that's because you had the house and the business on the same lot. And that's, that's how you were approved. And so they would still have to apply for a new conditional use permit because unless they live there and run the business, it's not the same business.
But they couldn't add anything to that business with your existing CUP.
They'd have to amend that.
Yep.
Right. We actually said they're more of a contractor, right? Because they really don't do.
They don't do landscaping. They go and mow lawns and take. And part of their issue with where they fit in was the amount of land use they were using for storage of vehicles. And that's what wasn't allowed because it was retail storage that was in that area. So that's why we could not let them in there.
And it didn't. And so that's where, that's what I'm saying is sometimes you can say you're a landscape business, but that's not really what you are. And when you come to the building, it's more about storage in office. And really about them, it was more about storage in office. It wasn't really about landscaping.
Right, poor use of the.
Yeah, you need to come up with.
And it was going to be a small building.
Otherwise, you have to specifically.
So, and so then it comes down to, if the business is inside and with no store, I mean, it really comes down to what you're putting outside in that district.
Which we're trying to put out here. If, and if Dean, I think, verified this, that under offsite services, I could sell to a heating and cooling guy or a plumbing guy that lives there and runs the business out of the shop.
No, because that's not the same business that you're, that you have.
I'm not, I'm not talking about Mr. U.P. I'm talking about under this new rules and regulations we're trying to hatch.
Right now, the residential zone business is not allowed in that district. So you run into the, you have to have a business on one property and a house on the other.
They can't go together.
Yeah.
The way it is right now, the business in the house, because your business, your home is nonconforming.
Company we turned down because they, we didn't like that.
No residence is allowed in that area anymore. So you can't just.
So even under this new.
Correct.
So I can't sell that place as.
I was going to ask you, are you, are you, are you keeping that the houses prior to 2003 are permitted?
I don't know that we've talked about that.
There's, there's kind of, because that's what Dan, so right now, Dan could sell his house because it's a permitted use. Because what we did, there's a, there's an exception today that says if your house is built to prior to 2003.
Right.
You're a permitted use. So you can subdivide, put your house on a half acre lot, hook up to sewer and water, and you can sell the house. Then, and Dan could, you know, do that and then sell to a business, but that negates his conditional use permit because the conditional use permit is for a residential zone business, meaning you have the house and the business on one lot. It doesn't mean that a new business can't be on the other lot. You just have to be, you have to pick from one of the lists. And then you would permit it and they, and they could, they can use the existing pole building, but they would have to bring it up to today's design standards.
That answers your question.
And me code. It's not, your situation is not an easy one.
No, it's taken a while to try and understand.
Because it's not as simple as saying it fits what we're doing here, so therefore it would work because you have that residential zone business. So that's another layer of complexity on top of it.
No, you're, you're existing, your existing house and business is legal nonconforming. So there's, you can, you can perpetuate that use as long as it exists today in the same form that it was permitted under. No one's going to take that away. But if you wanted options, there's, you know, there's a couple of different options that you can, you can do. It just has to, it has to comply now with the new district. And so, and that's the part I can't tell you because I don't know all the, I don't know all the nuances to your new district.
Could he sell it to two different people?
Yes.
Sell it to a, as a residential and then sell the other?
Yes.
We both know that Daddy can have, always want to live right there.
But that means that you would have to sell to someone who wants to live there and run the business as you run it today.
Is that an off button?
Oh, good.
Without maybe the.
So Joe, he didn't there, couldn't move in there.
Because that's not what your CUP is for.
Correct.
I understand that part. I understand. Give myself some more options. How do I, how do I do that? How do I give myself more options? House on there and today zoning.
I, I, I take that back. And I, I think that your house today is permitted. If you subdivided your property and you subdivided a half acre, no less than a half an acre, and you hooked up the sewer and water, you could sell your house today because it's a permitted use. The rest of your property, whatever you come up with, he can, I mean.
Yep.
He can do whatever he wants. So if it's a plumbing business, rebuild the building. You know what I mean, as your trade shop, you certainly can. And he can still, he can still live in the house.
Right.
It just would be two separate parcels.
Right.
And he would have done that. It just wouldn't be what you were permitted in 1997, which was a residential zone business, which allowed you to have the house and the business on one lot. So, but it also depends on what you do in the future. But you always have your legal nonconforming house. It'll either be legal and nonconforming or permitted, depending on what you do.
Well, depending on how this ordinance is written, if it doesn't reflect the existing ordinance, which allows homes in existence in 2003 or whatever the date was, if that provision is pulled out and he subdivides his property and we don't allow housing, house has got to go.
Oh, would the house become nonconforming?
Because you subdivide, you've changed the nonperformance.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
The cup goes away.
Now.
Yeah, so the big implications if you take out that permitted use.
Well, that's your, that's a policy decision. I'm just pointing out if that provision that's in the ordinance now
Yep.
is not continued.
Yes.
Which we've said, it's been going on for 20 years. Is that long enough to leave that option? The community wants the bang for the buck for the community. The homeowner, or the landowner wants the bang for the buck for themselves. And this becomes a policy decision whether you make that exception or you don't. I mean, it's up to you.
Yep, I forgot about that.
But I want to be careful. If we don't have that provision in the next ordinance and he subdivides, there is no home.
There's no home provision. You're right.
The condition of the fact would be.
So you have to say that anything prior to 2003.
Yes, in order for them to keep, to keep sales, yes.
Like you did off of.
The same would have to go for the.
But we haven't had that discussion yet.
General business district.
Oh, it's for all of those properties.
Yep.
It's if somebody doesn't subdivide and we have taken out that you can have a home if it was there in 2003. If that provision is gone, they can still have the home. They just can't change the property.
The property, you're right.
You can't subdivide without losing that.
Status, you're right.
Nonconformance.
See, that's why I need Dean here.
Does that make sense?
I'm trying to ram.
I know, it's complicated.
It is, it is.
It just shows me enough what's something fair.
So to me, your biggest stumbling block is the house, not the business side of it. Because most of what you've talked about, if the house wasn't there, those businesses would be allowed. And, and what has to get decided is whether or not that language remains in the ordinance. Which we haven't discussed that yet because we're just trying to get through.
My point is, because we didn't want to make that.
If that language remains, would it reflect on all?
No, not on that.
Well, it's only going to, it's only going to reflect on your situation because you're the only one in that.
We won't bring that up.
With a residential zone business, there's plenty of houses in there. I mean, everybody with a house will be in that situation. And as soon as you make it nonconforming, it's really tough on them.
proximity because none of that land is buildable. All of this is going to develop as one piece.
And I agree.
This is junk. So it wouldn't matter to me which way it went.
Yeah, and, yeah, yours is only 20 years old, so it's.
Part of the reason we were debating about making this is then there's more property for them. B1 here and the landowner. What makes sense? It's just another part of the debate.
All right, it's getting on 9:30, guys.
Should we move along here? Ben, do you want to keep going or? I think we're all aware of where you're at, Dan. Probably the quicker we get on to this stuff here.
But I also, I mean, I think, I think his situation, his question is, what we're doing here is not going to, I think, restrict you. It's the second phase when we talk about the residential. Yeah, we're not there yet. Yeah. But so knowing your situation, I'm going to have to keep that in mind.
There's also an option, if it opens other possibilities, to consider that property as B1 instead of C3. And depending on where you ultimately go about these off-premise businesses, if you don't want them in the C3 district, right now we allow them. To his benefit. But if for some reason you said, well, wait a minute, we kicked out a business that was in here two months ago, we've, we've now put it back in. This language would allow them to come back in. And if that's not our intent, then the only way to have Dan get his contractor shop is to extend the B1 up on his property. And then we eliminate the off-premise businesses, service business, from all of the C3 district. Because that's implying the same landscape business that we turned down.
Could he sell his property as something commercial? You know, a lot of times there are places that actually move into a home, like law offices do it, or, you know.
As long as they don't live there as a resident.
Huh?
If they turn the house into an office building, then it's no longer residential, then that's.
But if we've done that on Lake.
That's fine, that would.
Yeah, so he could do that, right?
Yeah, if it's. Yeah, if, if it's converted from residential to commercial.
Right, right.
Or.
So that the building wasn't a waste, or that you wouldn't?
Yeah, and sometimes from a code standpoint, it's not practical. I don't know how old the home is and if there are other issues. Sometimes you've got to change the water pipe size and things of that nature, depending on the occupancy. So that's, the other thing is, you, you haven't even talked about it, but if you left the provision that homes in existence are allowable, then what Elizabeth originally said, split it off into half acre and hook up the sewer, would be allowed. But then the whole district would have that same. And, and that, to me, doesn't serve the larger, long-term community purpose. But it might solve it short-term.
So this is, so a little bit of background of how, how, how Dan got into his situation, or how the code, because I actually, Lori dug out the code from 1997. So in 1997, the code allowed all R5 uses in the commercial district. Because Dan zoning was a CI district. And because the R5 district or uses rolled into the CI district, because at first when I read it, I'm like, how did he build a house in a commercial district? Because generally you don't build houses in a commercial district. Well, because the uses rolled from the R5 district into the CI district, it was allowed to have a residential zone business in the CI district, and that's how it was permitted.
R5 was a residential.
R5, R5 uses rolled into the district. Ironically, landscape businesses weren't allowed in the CI district, but because it was a residential zone business, he was allowed to have this known landscape business. So it's, it's a little unusual how that got to be. Because, but it's because it was a ruling district? Because at first I was like, how could this be? Because in the testimony and the public hearing, it says it's a commercial district. So it, it's a little bit more complicated than, than, than the normal sequence of events in a, in a commercial district.
I brought it up. Need to plan.
But the answer is really the house is, the, the house is complicating the situation.
Yes.
And all of the business uses that you've mentioned, most of them, I think, would fit under C3, if you didn't have the house sitting there. So the house sitting there, we have to consider separately from what we're doing right here.
And the CUP part of it, to sell it the way it is, it has to maintain a residential own business, a rand business, as a landscape business, and it is what it is. I mean, the conditions of that CUP is what it's governed by.
Well, the ironic part of that, the CUP is over the whole parcel. And it's over the entire parcel for a home and a business. I mean, that's the way it was permitted.
Yep.
And then one of the conditions says, if there's any, you know, anything else, else in that, you have to amend the CUP. So it was very specific. To what?
To your planning commission.
So where are you sitting?
All right. So we got through the B1, right?
Yeah.
Did we get through B1?
Yeah.
I was happy with B1.
So the next step, I was going to go from here, after talking with Elizabeth and Dean, was taking what we all agreed upon, which is the definitions of the uses so far, obviously adding landscaping, nursery, garden center, defining those. And the district, the purpose statements for each district, and the actual uses that we just talked about now, and making it into its own ordinance. And then from there, we would, so instead of having multiple handouts and then just the list, you would have something that looks like an ordinance. And then from there, we could, so to speak, attack each district one at a time. We could go into commercial, community commercial and look at it and say, this has now been, and this is, I, the only reason I'm going this route is, we are starting to come into a little bit of a busier season, we are getting more permits. Already, we have a CUP on my desk and two IUPs for Billboard. And then next week, on the 18th, we actually, at the planning commission, will be looking at a concept plan for Clear Channel for Billboard. So there is limited time for these larger workshop meetings. So this will allow us to address one district at one meeting at a time, instead of doing this large overview for multiple districts. So we can kind of fill in the blanks. We'll have purpose statement for the district, the uses we want to see in the district, and we'll have the definitions for each use. And then we can go into design standards, we can go into looking at what do we want to see as permitted, conditional, or if we want to continue with interim. And during that time, we can continue to see, we'll bring up the houses from 2003 and anything else that we want to see changed. But I think that's where I saw this going next. And Elizabeth, is that kind of similar to what you were thinking, or something else too?
So as Ben described, that's what we talked about. What the, what I would like to see is that, that you adopt the, you know what I mean, adopt, adopt the ordinance, you know what I mean, with, with that portion? Because what that does is, it establishes the districts, it establishes the use. If you decide to change it, because we're going to have another, another code change, then you would just amend it. But at least then it gives the base. Because right now, we're also operating under the old uses. And so you went through all this work, and then, you know what I mean, all the applications would come in, would be, would be coming in under the old zoning. So it would just, I think, be easier, and then it would establish this, this zoning and the zoning districts, along with the mixed use. And then if you did design standards in each, as their, you know what I mean, owned sections, we could keep adopting them.
So are you saying adopt the ordinance without the design standards and those kinds of things, basically with the language that we're, and then add those components as we get through them?
Yep. Because otherwise, this will, it'll probably take two or three more mends to, to get through this. Because now you're going to get into the season where you're going to get, you know what I mean, two or three applications a night, you know what I mean? So you won't have this long discussion period. But at least then we'll be able to establish the, establish the uses in the districts. And even if you, you have underlying, underlining design standards already in the districts. You know what I mean, in the, there's, in the code landscaping, there's all, those are already set, you know what I mean? And there's not, it's not like you have nothing.
And you do have ideas in your purpose statement of where you want to see your highest, yeah, we don't know the materials or the percentages, or if you wanted to have a certain roof line, but you do have already guidance in, if we were to adopt this, in the purpose statement for each district, where you have highest design standards to higher quality and then the, along with what we already have.
So when you say if we adopt this, are we going to see what looks like an ordinance?
Yeah.
But where there's thing, where there's space for a design standards, it's TBD? Or is it whatever the design standard is currently on the books, or the sort of like that zone?
Exactly. You, you'll just, you'll have to tell us, you know what I mean, which one, you didn't mean, in the existing design standards, which one you wanted to apply to for, for now until you further define it. So as Dean said, my brick or better, as, you know what I mean, that was over the community retail. You'd have to say, you know what I mean, what districts that, that would still remain. And I'm not saying that we won't, that we won't still continue it. But the timing wise, you wanted to get certain things in place. There's no way to not get, you know what I mean, not get those in place. Because it's going to take us at least two more months to get through all of this other stuff. And that's only four meetings.
So when would we see the draft ordinance language? Does that go back to the planning commission and then to us?
We still have to sit public hearings. That's why I said, this is a pretty, you know what I mean, pretty long. And if we have, if we do it in two, two stages, or two versions, let's just say, I think we'll, we'll get it all done. But I don't know, Dean, you think, I mean, we, we won't get it done for two or three more months if we, if we do design standards for every district, no?
There, there needs to be some structure. And part, part of the problem, it was bad enough when we added three mixed-use districts and there's no place to put them in the ordinance. Now we have gone from four to eight districts in the freeway corridor. And we're talking about major reformatting to, to fit this in, without just totally starting over, rewriting the ordinance. That'd take forever. So I have to, I have to, I have to think about it. And it's probably going to be taking three districts and then cramming four new districts into that. And so it would be totally eliminating existing sections of the ordinance and replacing it. If you have already spent any kind of time reviewing the, my original layout of the three mixed-use districts, it had a handful of uses. That's fine, we can insert the ones you've talked about, we can add a purpose statement, and there were design standards in those as a starting point. It wasn't brick or better, it wasn't even 50% brick or better. And that's, that's the devil in the detail. So we have those for your high design district. And they're, you know, starting at quantities that you may not be happy with, but they reflected the building that you were reviewing, the apartment building. They have different commercial standards than the residential standards for those. So there is a starting point. And if you've had a chance to look at it, you know, you can say, well, that's crazy, or he's way off here. But you've got to fine tune that once we get a certain format. And I haven't figured that out. It took a while to, to, to get the three districts in. Now I've got to get four more. But we will take everything that you've had preliminary consensus on. And I would say I would even insert, you know, take a shot at these design standards so that you have something to look at. And, and decide that, yeah, that's kind of a declining standard, which is what we have now. I mean, it was top in the community retail, it was a little less in the, a lot less in the commercial showroom, and a lot less in the industrial. So you, you can be the judge of that.
And in between all of that, we'll start talking about the model and assumptions. Because I think that will help you on design standards.
So when's our, when, when are we talking about seeing this? And would we see it in a workshop first, like we've been doing?
The model, Tammy and I worked on it today, so you'll see the model at your workshop on the, with assumptions. But I want you to understand that each district with the assumptions is based on a square footage assumption. And so with declining design standards, so will the square footage for the building.
So far.
So I'm talking about ordinance, staff ordinance. Would we see that as, in a workshop?
Oh.
I think we should. Oh, because there's a lot, I mean, otherwise I can see, I think it'd be more efficient to do it as another workshop.
Okay.
Well, wait, wait.
Anybody else can weigh in?
So Ben, is the next meeting just the concept?
As of right now, it's just Clear Channel. Nothing else is scheduled, no other public hearings.
So what the concept is, is, so the, the two billboard companies decided to do two different things. The out-front billboard company decided just to bring the applications through, and they have a column cover that they think is a really good one, and they brought their both applications with that column cover. Clear Channel felt that, because they have more billboards, they felt that they wanted to come through and show you the concept of what their column cover, what they would like to do for the column cover before they gave you 23 applications. And so while one company only has five billboards, the other one has 23.
And out-front's actually only applying for two.
And they're only applying for two right now because that's all that's due. So they've taken a different approach. That's, so your next meeting, that's all you have, is the Clear Channel concept? So the discussion can be continued jointly. I just don't know what would be ready for the next meeting.
The next PC meeting.
The next planning commission meeting, nothing.
Yeah.
So. So it sounds to me like they're going to need a month to get the ordinance in shape.
I'll try to get an outline of how to reformat, but the bulk of putting this in, not, not by the next planning.
So, so if, so if that's not done, so Ben, is there like a workshop we can do on design standards at the next, at the planning commission? In other words, can they start to talk about, you know, one of the districts, you know what I mean, if you had, the same way you did the, the, when we talked about each of the districts, like you take the top third, and we talked about design standards?
I think a good, if we did want to do that right away, I think a good way to address that is like what Dean was just saying, he already had some of those mock ones for higher use. So the highest design standard, I'm thinking of that Dean may already have an example for is the mixed-use one. So we could do something where we discuss mixed-use one, two, and C1, which would be our probably highest design standards as of right now. And we could use what we have in our current ordinance along with mockups in, or the examples that Dean had already written when we first started all this for the mixed-use districts.
So if we did worksheets like that for the next meeting?
For the next PC meeting.
Would that work?
Yeah, the focus in what I prepared again was on the residential component of the mixed use.
Yeah, that's true.
And it, it brings in the significance of architectural components as part of the wow factor, whereas the commercial buildings, it's, it's what percentage of materials you want. And we haven't focused on that. And, and what was approved for Ivy was basically not primarily or all brick, it's 50% masonry. So it's a combination of panels and.
And I realize that, but that was under a PUD, so, which would have been different anyway from, from the design standards set.
Yeah, to me, you're starting over. I mean, what we tried to do for the high-rise was very specific, and it was a compromise to what they were proposing and where your starting point was. And if you don't want to go there, because you don't have anything on the books.
None of us were very happy with that. I don't know that we even want that as a starting point, because that was sliding towards a point where none of us were going to say that was okay anyway, so.
And that's a policy decision. We'll, we'll, we'll frame it and you can fill in the blanks.
So I think we'll do, I think we'll, Ben and I will, and, and he will brainstorm about, more about, about a PowerPoint on, on how to put, we'll start with, you know what I mean, just the, the top districts, because I think that's going to be your highest standard, so we might as well start there. And, I don't know, work from the bottom up or from the top down?
I was going to say, we can start with the highest districts, and like you said, have a PowerPoint, just think of a way to get a baseline to see how everyone's feeling these districts. During that process, like with the apartments, we might learn what is really restrictive, is it truly going to be brick or better, or how restrictive is that going to be for anyone coming in?
And we'll do, we'll do it through pictures, kind of like what we did with the billboards. I think once you start, you know, eight, 12 pictures, you know, when we were showing the column covers, it was like, what don't you like, what do you like? It was a much easier conversation.
So right now, if any new business comes into the mixed-use area, still, we're under the same, we got the same problem we had when the.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep.
And any other areas, it's the existing design standards that they still would be following. So the sooner we can really get these defined, the better our changes are going to be, correct?
One other question, one of the things we talked about was talking with Taro about whether he wanted land that they all had been just in C1.
Yep, the, the blue.
Have that conversation with him, because that would also impact the boundaries.
Yep.
So do we want to have that conversation with him?
We're, we're, we're going to have the, we are due to have a conference call with him, so we'll have that conversation when we talk to him about. about another issue that he brought up. So we'll, we'll do it at the same time.
But it'll be in time for the next time we see the next iteration.
Oh, yeah.
We ready for the public open forum?
Wow, look at all those faces on there.
Scared the last one out here. Okay, nobody there for that? Information City Administrator's Report, number eight.
Last of our elections yesterday, we had 445 people come to the Paul Place. And so two elections down, two to go this year. So other than that, applications are coming in. We got, all those applications came in last week that we just talked about. We anticipate a few more coming in this week. So it looks like we'll be busy. The open house for, or the ribbon counting for renting uses is next week at 11:00. We did post it, so anybody that wants to go can go.
Great. Planning Commissioner's Report, I have nothing. Barb, do you have anything? Dan?
Nope.
Chris?
Um, I just want to say, I know we talk about the time this is all taking. Had we not done all the joint meetings, we probably would have stretched it out another three, four months. So it really has been very helpful for us all to work together at the same time. And I appreciate it because this is a lot to go through. And not having to go back and forth, I still think has been the best way to do it. And any time in the future as we finalize any of this, I still think it's a good way to, to try and speed up the process. So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, cities. Staff, you guys have done a wonderful job.
You guys have done a phenomenal job.
Ditto on that. I guess I'll be at the council meeting next week to explain what went on here. And...
Did you take good notes?
Yeah, it'll be real brief. Item 11, motion to adjourn. Anybody want to make that motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Everybody said aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? None? We're done then. 9:50.